Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law is Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough School Committee will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at this website printed in the agenda. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And I'd like to call to order the Southborough School Committee open meeting tonight, Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, and the time is 6:35 PM. First item on the agenda is audience sharing. I can't see, are there any, any people in the audience participating? I think there are. I don't see any hands up. Give it a minute. Okay. Then why don't we move into new business? And I would like to just, I guess, identify a procedural point of view that I have. I know that there are various presentations that occur in these meetings, and I know there's a protocol for the chair to kind of keep, keep one's eyes out to see if somebody has a hand raised. Sometimes I'll miss that. So I want to invite any of the presenters. If you are in the middle of a presentation and you feel it's not going to disrupt what you're doing, and you see a hand up, feel free to invite the school committee member to ask the question. I'll keep my eye open also, but don't be bashful. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg Martino, the superintendent.
So good evening and thank you. I'm pleased to share that it's been quite some time since the Southborough Committee met. I believe it was on September 9th. And we were still engaged in professional learning and students had not begun the school year. So this evening, I'm pleased to share that we did begin the academic school year on September 16th. That week, we did welcome preschoolers and K through H students were in a remote model. On Tuesday, September 22nd, we welcomed in-person students at the elementary level. And the following week, we welcomed Trotter students. Each principal this evening will provide more details of an update around their specific school opening. But I will share that it was great to see our buildings come back to life with students and teachers and the buzz of learning.
Greg, I'd like to just interrupt for one second. I neglected to mention that all of the Southborough School Committee members are present at this meeting. Sorry.
Okay. And if you, I'm just going to hang, hang on one thing. I, I do have to let my dog out of my room where else she's going to bark and disrupt. So give her two seconds.
We want to see your dog.
She's a 12-year-old English Bulldog who, she's an elder dog who needs a lot of attention. So so again, I just wanted, you know, it's great to see our buildings come to life and it was a unique and extremely challenging reopening. And I just want to thank Principal Clayton Ryan, Steve Mucci, Kathleen Valente, Gary Herschuk, and Assistant Principals Stacy Mahoney for the tremendous effort that they placed in making sure it was a smooth reopening. I think that I also want to thank the directors for the work over the course of the summer and the first month of September. Again, it was a tremendous team effort and all the directors did an outstanding job. From Keith Lavoy to Rhoda Webb, to Julie Doyle, to Marie Allen, Becky Pellegrino, Heather Richards, and Assistant Superintendent Stephanie Ryan. It was a heavy lift, but we had a great team. And although it was a relatively smooth reopening, we do realize that it was not perfect and that we are looking at what went well, what needs to be adjusted and how we can fine tune moving forward. I also want to take a minute and just thank all of our educators as well. Our educators are outstanding and have again placed a tremendous effort in making sure their students have a great experience. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the principals. So each principal will, will provide a brief update and then also provide an opportunity for the committee to ask any questions of the principals or the directors. And why don't we start with Principal Ryan?
Thank you, Superintendent Martino. I would echo everything that Greg said about our reopening. It was a tremendous lift for all of us and it was a communal lift in terms of all of us working on it together to get there. We didn't stop from the spring. We took what we learned from the spring, used that to help us prepare over the summer. And it was a collective effort. So I'd want to start by, by saying that to thank you to the entire district. But specific to FINN, I really want to thank Khalid Baba, David Triavani, Keith Lavoy, Brian Fantoni, and the entire custodial crew for the work that they did in preparation for our physical opening. It was tremendous. Everything from the feasibility study to the actual physical opening required inventorying and the movement of furniture. And I would say that David and Khalid probably moved every piece of furniture we have in our building to some other area in the school. It was a tremendous task for, for all of them to get ready. I also want to thank the reopening committee for the FINN school. They worked over the summer to help with the reopening plan and to help shape the systems and structures that we use each and every day in a way that adheres to the parameters and the safety measures that we need to, to open safely. So they worked with me over the summer. We analyzed everything from our pickup, our drop off and pickup systems to dismissal to lunch. Time on learning. I mean, it was every aspect of our functioning was analyzed and reviewed. So I want to thank them for their, their dedication. As Greg had mentioned, it was an opening like no other opening. I think, I don't want to say a silver lining because I don't believe that a pandemic has a silver lining. But in this process, I think what we have found was that the rallying and the support of each of us in our own way has shaped a kind of unified tier of leadership and commitment and can-do-ness that we haven't seen in a while. So I want to start by acknowledging the FINN school staff with their commitment to making it work. There were a lot of emotions associated with reopening. The plan was in place. We accepted the plan. We moved forward. We were committed to making it happen and having our students back in the building, but that was not without emotion and some strong emotion. And it was the work of the district in acknowledging that and bringing in Kerry Wilkins, Dr. Kerry Wilkins, who's a clinical psychiatrist to help us with our feelings, acknowledging that, preparing us for what we had within our control and what we could do to help shape the experience of our students and make it a pleasant experience. So I'm pleased to say that we're in a very good place right now at the FINN school. We have the, the luxury of having Marie and her staff preview what could be with our summer program where we had summer, we had students come in to the FINN school and at the high school for their supports and services and they were, they were wearing masks, staff were in their PPE and they were supporting students and servicing them in, in the ways that they typically would do. That was a breath of fresh air for us. That was quickly followed by what Greg had mentioned, our preschoolers, our three and four-year-olds coming into the building for their first physical experience in school with masks. And they were able to adhere to the wearing of masks, social distancing in ways that adults couldn't think of. So it was a great preview for us. That lowered our anxiety and it helped our physical in-person opening happen with much better ease and with a relative level of calm. We're, we're really in a good space right now. I think our hybrid program is, is working out well. Our standalone remote program is off and running, getting good reviews. And we also have had our preschool program established under the direction of Jennifer Henry, a preschool remote program, which we are proud to say that we have 18 students enrolled in, and there is a waiting list. So a lot of it has happened over the time to get ready. Our staff has also been engaged in some incredible professional development, which will be sustained regardless of, well, when this pandemic ends, this will be one of the things that's sustained, the ability to use Google classrooms, those creative bit mojis, learning other different management platforms and applications to help support our learners remotely and in person. So I think we're off into a good, a great start, but I want to echo that it was a collective effort and I'm just glad that we're back in person and seeing kids each and every day.
Thank you, Clayton. Before I have Steve Mucci share a few words, I just also would be remiss, I did forget Mary Ellen Duggan, who has been instrumental in reopening. So I think unconsciously, I just wanted to, to do a special shout out to Mary Ellen for all her tremendous work. So thank you, Mary Ellen. And the danger of listing a list is that you might forget someone and I forgot Mary Ellen. So Mr. Mucci.
I'm going to echo a lot of the same things that, that Clayton had shared and I'll just piggyback on what Greg had shared. Mary Ellen is a pretty regular phone call or a text message for me in the course of a week, just to make sure that, um, you know, we're doing the right things at Woodward to make sure everyone stays safe and healthy and, um, you know, we're all able to navigate the school year together. So thank you for all that you do, Mary Ellen. So all things considered, I think it's been a pretty smooth start to the school year. I want to start by recognizing Ed Mercer and Joe Mancini, as well as Brian Fantoni and Keith Lavoy for all that they had done to prepare the buildings. They worked diligently over the summer to make sure that we had what we needed and to make sure that our spaces were going to be safe and clean and, and ready for students. They worked on classroom and educational spaces being redesigned, common areas marked with signage to accommodate for spacing and provide our young students with reminders for the course of the day. Cafeteria space has been completely redesigned so that all students and staff can be safe while in the cafeteria. A lot of that work that took place over the summer did not end when the school year began, and in many cases, it's, it's ramped up considerably. They worked diligently to make sure that the building is always safe and clean, providing any kind of sanitizing of high-traffic areas that, that we need throughout the day, whether it be regular maintenance or for those, those calls that we make throughout the course of the day to make sure that everyone is safe. They're very responsive and I can just, I can't thank Ed and Joe enough for their day-to-day operations. From a transportation aspect, I feel like everything has gone extremely smoothly this year. We've experienced regular communication with NRT and a few hiccups along the way. That's, that's to be expected for every school year, but they've been addressed quickly and, and handled appropriately, whether it be through Keith, Jean Pinto, or central office staff and NRT drivers. So I've been very pleased with, with that communication. I feel like, again, we're off to a great start with that. To echo Clayton's points, just a huge thank you to the district leadership team as well as the Woodward reopening committee. That was made up of faculty and staff who put in a tremendous amount of effort in creating our reopening plan. They worked, we met numerous times and they worked on their time over the summer and I can't thank them enough. It was a huge undertaking. We looked at every aspect of our building from arrival procedures to lunch and recess to student materials where they're kept in the, in the building or in the classrooms to bathroom procedures to sick visits. Every aspect of our day was considered and it was a great deal of energy that was put into it, but we felt like we have really reflective and adaptable plans that we can adjust when necessary and when needed. But it was just a great team effort for everyone involved. We've used parent and community feedback to refine that plan and process. So when we do find something is working or maybe it didn't go smoothly the first few days, we're trying to be reflective as much as we can so that we can improve the process for everyone. As far as students, you know, the most important part of our opening, it was wonderful to have them in the building. It brought certainly a new level of energy. We had been preparing for what felt like months and weeks with reimagining learning, but to actually have students in the building brought a great deal of energy and, and really kindled that fire that, you know, all of our educators have. All staff have supported students with the transition back to school. We're establishing and practicing routines daily. While we know that the, the challenges are significant this year, I, I feel spirits are high and the collegial spirit of Woodward is alive and well. We talk a lot about be kind and remind. That's something that we say at staff meetings and that's something that we say to our students and to each other. This is a brand-new experience for all of us and we're trying to manage it the best we can. And we'll certainly have a greater level of success when we work together and, and you know, stick together like, like we do at Woodward. I've worked in several communities and in my career and I can't say enough about the strong educators we have at Woodward and across Northborough, Southborough. Their commitment to students, their willingness to take on challenges and, you know, it's just a really great place to work and I'm so thankful that, that we have the staff that we do to, to provide the education to our students.
Great. Thank you, Principal Mucci. And next we have Principal Valente.
I'm back. All right. I'm really excited to share about NEARIS reopening and, and this is what happens when we're the third in line and and Gary's fourth in line. A lot of what's already been said, we could echo the same sentiments. Just briefly about our opening, just excellent work on the behalf of our custodians, McDagall and Claudio de Silva and Keith and Brian supporting them, truly a Herculean effort on all parts. It's one of our gyms. So we have two gyms in NEARIS. One of our gyms is completely filled with furniture and not just haphazardly. It is labeled and partitioned and easily accessible for staff should they need to get something. So that took a lot of effort, a lot of heavy moving. So that, that was a huge part of our summer work. I also want to thank our reopening committee as well, our head teachers and team leaders who really were accessible all summer long. Weekends and days, weekdays, whatever was needed to put together a really comprehensive reopening document. And so that was, that work was greatly appreciated. All of our work from the end of last year up to day one was really all in theory, putting plans in place until on day one, that's when the application phase began. And because of the, the work and the continued commitment to making sure that we are keeping all staff and students safe and bringing the best educational experience we can to, to our students. We were committed to reviewing, reflecting and revising as we continue to examine our processes. And so that's what makes us able to open our doors each day to welcome our students and staff into whichever learning model that they're participating in. As a staff, we kicked the year off with the poem, "The Red Wagon", which is really about that everybody owns a little red wagon and some days you're able to pull the red wagon and put your things into it. Some days you're going to need to support a colleague or a friend up here and he or she may need to get into your red wagon and you'll pull it or some days you may need that pull and you need to sit and someone needs to pull your red wagon. But essentially the theme is supporting each other. Every day is going to be different and everybody's on a different journey, but if we all join together and help to pull and support each other's red wagon, we're going to make it through together. So that's a theme that will be woven throughout our year. I want to welcome our new teachers. We have Erin Schuster, who is one of our fifth grade teachers, Karen Fisher, Dave Lang, and Kelly Schreppenhauser are our standalone remote program teachers. And Emma Decker is our hybrid remote teacher and our new ESP Caroline Knowles. And kudos to all this staff for, the teachers for joining together to really work collaboratively for planning across the grade levels and, and for the opportunities they've taken to have vertical planning as well. And their preparedness, working together each day, getting supplies ready and it was really a team effort to be able to open our doors on day one. We also were able to create some outdoor learning spaces, our NEARI courtyardy in the back of our school, which many folks don't get to see very often. It was overgrown and you couldn't even tell there was a courtyard in there that was cleaned up and looks really wonderful. We were able to put two tents outside and that's where Ms. Sherman, our band teacher, has been providing lessons. Students are great, are big distance apart, well beyond six feet. And she's been taking them out there and she went out yesterday in that rainstorm. She was out there giving some lessons and the students were having a ball. So that's a great outdoor learning space. We're also taking advantage of the NEARI courtyard in the middle of the school. Mrs. Johnson, our, our teacher, has taken friends out there and they've really created some great pieces of art outside. And we've, we created a walk-in theater in our dining room for during lunchtime as well as for content-specific learning experiences. I also want to thank the SOS. They were instrumental in helping deliver the first day supply kits, allocating room parents, identifying ways that parents can still support our school through volunteerism, even though we can't welcome them through our doors. We have many parents who are, who are chomping at the bit to help out however way they can. We had our first virtual open house that we launched on September 15th and it included a tour of the school. We created some videos for drop-off and pickup and each of the specialists created introductions and classroom teachers spoke to specific nuances within their classroom. A few other spaces we created to, that we're utilizing as learning spaces are Zen Dan, our quiet corner, and a few of the other outside offices that allow for six-foot distancing and help us to be able to meet the needs of students in smaller group settings. And it was great to be able to have this year, all of our classrooms are equipped with the Red Cat Lightspeed system. So those, I'm not, a few years ago, David Fineran and Kristen Tev came to the school committee and they demonstrated it's an amplification system, which is even more important for us this year with teachers and students wearing masks. The teachers are able to amplify their voices and students can hear them more clearly. So that's been a really welcome addition. And again, all classrooms are equipped with it. We had our first principal's coffee last week and it went very well. We had great attendance, great participation. And again, parents wanting to volunteer for the events that we're hoping to be able to have virtually. And then today we had our first school council meeting where we welcomed four new parents to our team. It's going to be some exciting work this year as we develop a new NEARI school improvement plan. So all in all, a great year so far. It was nice to hear students in our gym yesterday because it was raining outside. Mrs. Nash couldn't take them outside. So we could hear them laughing and playing and it was just, just so nice to hear. So we're glad to be back and we're looking forward to a terrific year.
Thank you, Principal Valente. And before I turn it over to Principal Herschuck, I just want to acknowledge that this is Gary's first year as a principal of Trotter School. So although he's had many reopening experiences at Trotter, this is his first as a principal. And he handled it masterfully and I would not wish being a new principal during a pandemic. But Gary has done an outstanding job. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Thanks, Greg. This year- Gary, could I ask a question before you, you get started?
Sure, Roger.
And I'm kind of breaking by age group here. In other words, before middle school. I'm just curious if, if any of the elementary principals could comment if, if it's relevant or appropriate on how the young kids seem to be doing with, with the remote process. Anybody want to jump in on that or there really isn't anything necessary to say at this point?
Well, I think, you know, Roger, it, it requires facilitation and adult involvement at the, at, at our level, of course, preschool K and one. But to the extent that we're, we're trying to get our kids accustomed to a simplified platform where our teachers are helping our students understand what's expected, how to access it on their iPads while they're in person, so they can take that knowledge and it's going to take time, of course. But then use that on their remote time to minimize the amount of adult facilitation required to have them access Google Classroom and other things. We're not quite there yet, but we're, that's our goal. Also, we're trying to print out material that would typically be printed out at, at home. So kids will leave their in-person experience with their teacher with any printed material that they need for their remote days. In addition to that, we do have check-in times with staff. So some synchronous involvement. But I, I would say overall, we're, we're getting positive feedback, but as everyone mentioned, you know, it's part of a learning process that we're not familiar with. We're familiar with the spring and we understand what went wrong or what we could adjust to make things better for what we did then. This is a little different than that. So it's still a work in progress. I did mention that Jen Henry has created a remote program for our preschoolers, which is incredible. We have 18 preschoolers who were signed up and a waiting list and that is live with synchronous connection. So that's a sign and as I think we all mentioned, there are some things that we're looking at for sustainability over time. And I think we're, we're seeing a lot of good things come out of this, this experience.
Thank you for that.
Roger, should I save my questions until Gary's done and address like all the K through eight as a whole or how do you want to look at this?
Well, if it's a question for K through eight as a whole, it probably makes sense to do that.
Yeah, I'll wait. Cause I have more questions based on feedback I've gotten from parents. So, but I think I'll, I'll wait until Gary goes.
Yeah, it'd be great to hear what, what Gary has to tell us before we ask any questions that would include him. Okay.
Thank you. So, um, thank you, Greg. This is, we actually had three openings this year. We did launch with an orientation for our remote days, the nine days at the beginning. I'd like to thank the teachers who put together a nice welcome video for our students for that particular launch. After that, on the 29th and the 30th, we did have two opening days for our cohort A and cohort B students. One day was met with sunshine, one day was met with rain, but regardless, it was great to see our students return to the Trotter campus. Mr. Clark, our band director had "We Are Family" playing in the background and it felt very familiar to all of us. Mr. Clark, our band director had We Are Family playing in the background and it felt very familiar to all of us. Um, while we, our students were welcomed back into the building. They saw an orientation film that kind of gave them the safety protocols and the the new way of life at Trotter. While that was taking place, we also had a orientation for our SARP students. Um, and uh, Mrs. Mahoney, my two guidance counselors, Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Anderson, myself. Were able to meet with our our fifty or so start SARP students and welcome them back into Trotter as well to kind of review schedules. Answer questions and remind them they're not SARP students, but they are trot- they're truly SARP um Trotter students. Very proud of our students collectively. I think they've adjusted very well. The energy that they have brought into the building, our teachers are really feeding off of. Um, I can tell you that, you know, although we haven't seen them since March twelfth, they have returned with their kindness. And their sense of humor and I can say with certainty that any staff member knows when the child is smiling underneath beneath the mask. Um, in addition, I would like to really recognize our SARP teachers and our SARP program. Um, we are carrying out three various models at 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 Trotter. And uh, we have some teachers who are teaching a hundred percent remotely. We have some teachers who are streaming a handful of students into their classroom while they're teaching students, they know, in front of them. And we also have some teachers who are co- who are working in a co-facilitate, a team teaching model where they have a co-facilitator. You know, they have broken new grounds with this teaching and learning model. And they are really customizing their work and approaches uh for our students who are um who are in the standalone remote model. Uh, I'll just give you one example. Our our teacher is creating a brand-new curriculum just for our SARP students. She knows what she's doing in the classroom is not necessarily easily transferable for students at home. She's buying different materials, she's buying different products, and she's creating a new curriculum and is really customizing that approach. And that's happening across uh across the board. Um, we are very fortunate. On Mondays, we have both our neck uh and castle programs in the building. And any day we have kids in the building is a win for us. So they have been um, they have been getting um, you know, more time in the building. And it's wonderful to see. Um, our teachers have appreciated our professional development day. Uh, to no surprise, there's not a lot of research on hybrid learning and teaching and learning. So the research, the the work we're doing right now is they're learning from one uh one another. But there's a heavy focus on collaboration and sharing the best practices. Um, during our last professional development day, we did focus on kind of the theme, a day in the life of our remote learners. We wanted our teachers to kind of take a look of the bird's eye view of what it's like for a child to be home, to be um, you know, um, in front of a computer. We had teachers analyze lesson plans that um that looked at direct instruction, collaboration time and independent time away from the computer. Based on that assessment, teachers recognized that, you know, where our strengths are and where we need to improve. Um, one of the things that we took away from that is how do we manufacture meaningful collaboration in the remote setting? And that's going to be a springboard for our next professional development uh time coming forward. Um, beyond that, like uh all the other principals have mentioned, I, we could not have done this without our reopening team. Which began this process in in uh early spring. You know, the, when we launched our reopening plan, that represented our best thinking in July and August. Um, we've always kind of taken the approach is that we have to let these reopening plans live for a couple of weeks. Collect some feedback, look at high-leverage patterns and make adjustments and we will do that accordingly. So our team is doing, already doing that. To support some of that work and that reflection, we are hosting our first coffee with parents on Monday. That will be uh, one will be for SARP uh families and the other will be for hybrid families. So we'll we'll hear from um the parent perspective around that. Eventually, we'll also get the feedback from students as well to make adjustments um as a whole. Um, I'm glad Stephanie Reinhorn was able to see kind of, you know, um, our teaching and learning in action. Uh, just our our teachers are constantly uh making adjustments. Mrs. Elsipidi, our chorus teacher is now has brought her her classes to the front door underneath the portico because the acoustics are better. Um, so it's not uncommon to see her chorus rehearsing outside our front door. Um, and that's a joyful sound to all of us in the office. Um, lastly, I know all the other principals recognize the Herculean efforts that came across the district. I also just want to recognize and uh thank our technology team that has been really kind of um working around the clock. Um, supporting teachers and around best practices, supporting families and students um collectively.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, did you say you had some questions regarding reopening for the uh principals?
Yeah, I do. I think probably other school committee members do too. So well, first I want to say that I've a daughter at El Gauguen, a daughter at Trotter. And a sixth grader at Trotter and her experience has been fantastic at Trotter. It's been. It's been smooth going from the buses, I mean, that like the buses running flawlessly from what we've seen, like on our side to. Drop off and pick up at school, working well to her day at school. Being interesting, she looks forward to going to school and her at-home days have been really good too. You know, she's been. She has enough to do and it's not overwhelming and it keeps her busy. You know, to lunchtime, then she takes a break and then she does a little bit more and she's done, you know, a little earlier than normal. And I think that's totally. Appropriate and fine and good and um it's going really well. So kudos to the Trotter sixth grade team from. From my point of view, that's awesome. Um, I've been getting a lot of feedback from parents and now I want to, with the caveat that. The last time I heard from people, it was over a week ago, so things could have changed since then. But the kind of the main themes that I've been hearing and and I don't know what the best way is, i- if it's principal by principal or if. Greg wants to just take the lead on addressing some things or or what, but these are kind of the main themes that I keep hearing from people. K through five needing more Zoom time, more teacher interaction on their at-home days has been a huge theme. Um, that they're too young to govern themselves yet and they need more teacher interaction has been what I've been getting from parents. Um, also in the K through five group, remote Mondays, the kids have been done really, really early in the day. Um, like eleven, eleven fifteen, kind of wondering if it's going to keep going like that or if it's um going to change. A lot of the kids, let's see, what else? Um, S- SARP has been going great, like the feedback I've gotten from parents is that the standard and remote program is fabulous. Uh, they really like it. The big concern that I got from them is that the classes are way too big. And so that's um one thing I was wondering about too. This was probably more of a Greg question, but the um, no, it's probably Greg and Kathleen. Um, there seems to be teachers handling um their double classrooms differently. So some teachers are, i- it basically what it comes down to is I've been hearing from parents that. There's inequity among the classes because some classes are getting teen- teacher interaction every single day. Because they're split, you know, teachers are splitting their double classrooms in a different way. So some are teaching. Remote on the remote, like basically kids are getting, it depends what class you're in, how much time your t- your kids are getting with the teachers. Um, and then finally, my last thing, and this is a big concern for me again against around inequality is. Um, kids, not the younger kids, the K through five kids not having enough to do at home on their at-home days. So parents who can afford this kind of thing are hiring tutors. Um, buying supplemental curriculum. And I, as a school committee member, that really set off red flags for me because. That's just a huge way to build inequity in our school, in our school system and that really worries me. Um, because not everybody can afford to do that and I don't think being a public school system, people should have to do that. But parents need to, you know, we're in this crazy world right now where parents need to work. And they have an eight-year-old kid who's bouncing off the walls because they're done with their work or they can't, you know, i- I just, that really, really worries me. So I know it's a lot, but that's what I've collected from families over the past few weeks. And so however, and maybe other school committee members want to chime in. I know Jen's heard a lot from families, Kamali. I haven't talked with um Roger and Katara specifically about this, but um maybe others want to chime in and then. We can address things, however you want to work it, but thank you.
So I, so I can speak to um some of Jessica's comments. First of all, I want to echo the comments that, you know, the plans that we put into place were, you know, plans on paper. And as we operationalize plans, you know, we really began to see, you know, what was working really well. Um, what needed to be changed and updated. And I just want to acknowledge that we're still in that process. Um, that we realize that there's, although we've had a lot of successes, by no means is the work done. Um, we need to fine-tune and adjust and 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 make improvements where we can. Um, in terms of um teacher interactions on the hybrid uh remote days. That was a concern that was shared with us um at various levels. Um, working with Kathleen and Steve and Clayton and Stephanie. We have looked at deploying more resources to those hybrid remote days and experiences. You know, having dedicated people to do that type type of um interaction with students. So that is something that we are working on, but we have made some um steps to improve that experience. Um, in terms of remote Mondays, that's another area that we receive feedback on. Um, that, you know, really the remote um Monday should not end um at eleven fifteen. We did need to have some calibration and we did calibrate as elementary schools um to make sure that. You know, after lunch, learning continued. Um, so we did make that adjustment. Um, in terms of um the SARP, we are, we are aware of um some of the larger class sizes. We've tried to accommodate and add additional staffing. When we've been able to, we realized that um there are a few families. Um, who are on the waitlist to get into the SARP program. And this is, you know, to be quite frank and honest with you, a real challenge. Um, because we are, we are being asked to do many things. We are being asked to run a a school within a school. And our SARP teachers have done an excellent job, but the moving landscape, people moving in and out of hybrid has. And and SARP has been a real challenge for us. Um, and we're looking at at the larger class sizes and making some adjustments. So Stephanie and Kathleen, Steve and Clayton and I are are really diving into that and are are making some progress. Um, in terms of um the inequity, um, I think just, I'll just speak in very generalities. The pandemic has exposed a lot of inequities of our educational system in general. Um, from those who can afford hiring tutors to those families who cannot. Um, you know, we are very a- aware of the that inequity that exists. I would argue that existed before. Um, and we need to adjust and adapt to it. We are looking at, um, you know, trying to make the hybrid remote learning experiences more robust. We're trying to make sure that, you know, we have a continuum of learners, that we meet the needs of each of our learners regardless of. Um, what a family can afford or not afford. Um, and it's something that we're continuing to have conversations around. I think it's larger than just a school system challenge. It is a community challenge. Um, but right now we're trying to tackle it in terms of looking at what each student's experience is. And how can we make sure that's our robust experience, helping a student move forward in his or her learning? So I think um. Um, and. I think ho- hopefully I uh touched on each of those, Jessica. It's it's not information that we're not aware of. Um, it's not new news for us. We are hearing this feedback anecdotally. And I'll also share that we will be providing opportunities for more formal input um from a broader uh perspective. So that parents have an opportunity to give us feedback. Again, we operationalized. Um, and this, the hybrid model and the SARP model requires a great partnership with families. And we need to hear how it's working for families. Um, so sir, you know, we are talking about surveying. And providing more formal opportunities for parents to give us feedback. And I will um ha- ask any of the principals to add any details that I've missed or Stephanie, if you want to add any additional. Uh, details that I may have missed or left out.
I think I'm, one of the the pieces that you mentioned, Jessica, um, just about like the amount of touchpoints that. Students have on those remote days. So that was one thing that we looked at as a leadership group and immediately found that. Um, having our math curriculum coordinators in both Northborough and Southborough provide touchpoints to students um who are remote. Um, was was a good way to um kind of provide them with additional teacher time. Um, as well as allocating additional staff members and resources. We have a new staff member who was just hired for um remote check-ins at Woodward. And I know that um Greg and the entire central office leadership team have been extremely supportive of that. So when we've had a need, um, there has been a response. So. Um, that person started this week and I'm happy to to um to tell you that we've been working on scheduling her, you know, every minute of the day. So that way, um, students can have more of those um more accountability when they're not with us in school.
Kathleen.
And same for Neri. With Mrs. Decker's schedule, we've shared out with, we've created a schedule for both fourth and fifth grade. Students throughout the day. So there's a continuum of support. And we've identified different content areas where she would be providing that support. So when our hybrid friends leave that afternoon. With their work that they'll be responsible for on their remote day. There's an opportunity for them to get support throughout the entire day as well as a check-in at the end. So it's been really well attended. Ms. Ms. Decker is doing a fantastic job and she's kept, she is working. With both fourth and fifth grade teachers during their PLCs and common planning time to be able to plan with them so that she can support the work. Um, from the direct instruction that they are deploying um on the hybrid days. So it's it's really working well and. It's a great addition to the model.
That's great. Could you maybe talk a little bit to the, how the double classrooms, like how different teachers are doing different things and. You know, some, because it seems like some students are getting, it's kind of like the Dover Sherburne model that we've talked about in the past that. Um, a lot of parents have been really asking about, like, why aren't we doing what they're doing where they have the um. The kids who are at home, like, so the, one of the double classroom teachers exclusively focuses on the kids at home and is with them all day remotely. And then the other teacher is with the students who are in the classroom live. And I know that some teachers have chosen to do it that way. And that seems awesome. So it's kind of like, well, why isn't everybody doing it that way?
You know, and so it's, it's, we have various models, absolutely. We, we, we have one. What I guess we would call a true double classroom. That's been a traditional double classroom for us. Uh, we don't have a double classroom in the fifth grade. We do have a combined, another combined classroom in the fourth grade. There are different models um that we've asked teachers to to develop based on the needs of the students. Within their classrooms, based on um. There's a plethora of reasons why we've made the decisions that we've made and same with our self-contained classrooms. Every room is is um based on the needs of the students and. Not everything is 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 equal, but it is equitable. I mean, we're doing our best to, again, put the students in the middle of our decisions. And make the best decisions that we can. And and we continue to revise, refine, reflect and revise as needed. Based on uh supports needed within the classroom, uh what the students need, how how we deploy. Our student support, teachers. So it's an, it's a, it's a, an ongoing uh process. Okay, thanks.
So I have a, um, anyone else on the school committee?
Yeah, I have a comment or a question. Are are we using our hands, Roger, or are we just jumping in?
Well, um. Oh, you're right. It's Kamali. She's, well, she's number one on the hand list. Perfect. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, um, so thank you to all the principals and um the staff for all the work that you're doing. The um, one comment I have is that. Um, I just wanted to like, let it be known that there are also. The one comment I have is that I just wanted to like, let it be known that there are also a population of parents and family support members who are overseeing students' work that haven't contacted you, this, you know, a teacher or a superintendent or a school committee member as of yet, because they're still waiting and waiting to see. They're still in the mode of, I know that this is new. I know that, you know, if this was two years ago, there would be initial, you know, revisements as the school year starts. And so there are a population of parents and support family members that are just kind of still in the wait to see mode. And so I just wanted to share that with you. I know some of those people. They're just a little bit more reserved and, and cautious. And I shouldn't say cautious, but they're, they realize that it's going to take a little time before the, the engine starts moving smoothly. The question I have is around, could someone share, what is the process that you're using in the schools to gather all of the communication and feedback that you're receiving? Is it on a weekly basis or, you know, every day or multiple times a day where parent contacts teacher, then the teacher then makes their own adjustments just to their classroom? And that's a done deal? Or does each teacher come back to the principal and say, these are the 10 different emails that I got today? And this is how I, and then someone else shares their 10 emails? And, and you see that there is a consensus of a particular issue? And then you make a revisement? What, what are the different processes that some of the principals could maybe share that they're doing? Gary?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about it. I think we did learn a lot last spring with NSborough Connect. I think, you know, there was a lot of reactions, one way or the other, about what was working well, what was not working well. And I would say that, you know, we, you know, the same experience was provided and we would hear multiple perspectives on the experience, whether the work was, the workload was too light, whether the workload was too, too difficult. And I think what we do collectively is we call, you know, the teachers, our guidance counselors, bring everything to the administration. And we started looking at the high leverage patterns. And we start, once we start collecting, we start seeing trends, those are, you know, that's where we start making the changes. I also think we, we, you know, Kamali, as you mentioned, a lot of parents are in that wait and see mode. You know, I don't think it's in best practice for us to respond and react just once we get, you know, a suggestion or an email right away, but rather they collect that information. I know last year, the, the central office team did a great job with, with some survey work. We were, we were able to use that survey work as well to make, to make, you know, some, some pivots to our work. So I think it's a very methodical and measured approach. There are things that have occurred that we could make a change on, that we, you know, just didn't identify right away and said, wow, that's easy. We can make that shift very simply. And there are things that I think systematically will have to take some, take some time. I think adjusting schedules, you know, extending days, things like that would have to take some time. But that's how, that's the work in the process that we've, is that trawneer.
To piggyback on what Gary was saying, same thing is happening at Neri. And I also think we're utilizing our professional learning communities too, to come together as grade level teams to have conversations about what teachers are hearing, the feedback they're getting. They're very transparent with me as well, so that we can come together and again, look at those themes, identify where we need to make adjustments. What are, what are the pluses and deltas? That we're, that we're seeing. But also I think it speaks to our collaboration as principals as well, because we are in contact with each other quite frequently, just getting the pulse, what, what are you seeing? What's the theme that, that we're sharing? And again, identifying those high leverage patterns and really being able to make a change across the four schools if need be, or just identify how shifts might need to occur. Again, not being reactionary, but really being thoughtful as we look at that feedback and examine it. And what can we do to make a difference for our students as well as our staff?
I think, if I could just add in, so when we have our, either weekly or bi-weekly leadership meetings with Greg and Stephanie, you know, all the principals will bring some of these items or pieces of feedback that we've been receiving. And then we put them out on the table and as Kathleen and Gary mentioned, look for those high leverage items where we're really seeing some themes across the grade levels and across the district. Two examples of those were the, the remote Mondays, the schedule for that. So we worked to, to become more consistent with that, as well as the need for remote check-ins. So those were items that we had discussed as a leadership team. But then there's also those items where, you know, families just reach out and, and ask for some, some guidance from classroom teachers and, and staff are so willing to be flexible or to support in any way they can. And a lot of times those things don't need to elevate to the district level or anything, because they can just be solved, you know, through regular communication between the parents and between faculty members.
And I'd just add that I think you heard Kamali, each of us talk about the parent forums that we've been doing. I've done two so far with the focus being on questions and answers. What can I do as a building administrator in terms of meeting your need? And I do it in kind of an anonymous way where parents can submit questions ahead of time, no names for those parents that are a little more reserved, don't want to speak up. And then I'll answer them live and have a live component as well. Some of those things are easy things that we can adjust to with our, I mentioned, printing material instead of having parents have to print it at home. Other things are more structural and systemic that we're working on slowly and will take time to, to get there. But we are actively looking for parent feedback. I think all of us take pride in the fact that we are available 24/7 for our parent community. Parents send me emails. At night I answer whenever I'm on telephone calls. We're always available. We're, and we're always listening. So I, I would urge your, the people that are speaking with you to reach out to us individually. And it could be that we work on those things in, in a way that is more responsive.
Thanks. And, and thanks for those answers. And I know this is being recorded. And for those that are listening, I hope that was helpful. The one last point, I think one of those adjustments that were made, we're having in the K through eight, I'm not sure what the high school is doing, but in the K through eight, one adjustment I saw was having optional math and language check-in top times with a, with one of the teachers for students. And is someone keeping metrics of, you know, the, are the students utilizing it? You know, anytime you say something's optional, they're gonna, our students are very bright and they'll say, I don't need to go to that. It's optional. But when are we keeping metrics of that? So that we maybe, again, adjust and utilize those, those subject matter experts, you know, differently if need be?
Yep. I can speak to that. We, we are definitely taking attendance and yes, taking metrics, as you said, on each of the grade levels and classroom, classrooms, individual classrooms, as well as with Kathy Lazard is providing some math activities with, to students across the grade levels. And we're also keeping data on attendance on that and participation as well.
Yeah. And just, and I'll just add to what Kathleen says, because I've checked in with Kathy about this. And when we say we're taking attendance, we don't mean we're like recording which kids attend, but just that Kathy is keeping track of the number of students who attend from a resource perspective, just like the point you were making Kamali, so that we can then analyze, is this the best support to students? Is it the best use of our resources?
Okay. And because one, Jessica brought up the point earlier that for those that are able to, or find the need, or they're able to supplement and, and have additional tutoring or education support services, maybe that's an area where, you know, we've moved, it changes from being optional to they become a time slot that students that would like to do something more, you know, that they can speak with that expert and say, I really liked what we learned this week or last week. Could you teach me more about exponents? Could you help me do whatever, this other equation, or write my sentences in a different structure, instead of it only just being to support a homework question? It could be about other things that they would like to advance or pursue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Jen, I think you're up next.
So I had just an observation based on just some feedback that people have given. And then I have a question too after that. But I, I did want to echo, you know, I heard a lot of the similar comments that Jessica has mentioned already. I do want to say that I think that a lot of that shifted probably over the last week as changes were implemented. So I do want to recognize that. And I think from, my daughter is actually at Neri in one of the double classrooms and she's loving it. That first week or so, it was, it was a little bit challenging on the remote days because she was done very early. So I was definitely concerned about that. And I was hearing a lot of similar concerns from parents across the board about not enough work. That definitely shifted. And her teachers were really responsive to that. Mr. Valencia was very responsive too. And we saw these changes that really made night and, it was night and day in terms of having those touchpoints and having the flexibility. Interestingly too, I also got feedback about the other double classroom. So some people were upset that their kids were getting less than this other double class in terms of contact. I also heard the other side of it too, where people are saying, well, my child's on the screen too much that day. I wish she wasn't as, it was as, you know, so I, I heard both things. So related to that, I was wondering if there's any way, or if there's anything that we're doing to look at those two models. And then I realized that, you know, right now, we're looking to see which, potentially which one works better and for what kinds of kids? How are we evaluating that? And are we looking at these two different frameworks? And I also just wanted to just give a personal shout out to my daughter's two teachers who are fantastic. She loves the double classroom. It's been a really good, after the first week or so, it's been a really good experience for her and worked out well. So that was my, that was my question in terms of consistency and how we're, how we're going to be evaluating whether or not these, which of these two models works, if we're going to keep both models?
Kathleen, can I just make a general comment? So one of the key components is that all the fifth grade teachers work very closely together. All the fourth grade teachers work very closely together. There's common planning time. They talk about common outcomes, common learning experiences. So that is a structure that exists behind the scenes. So that again, whether your child is in classroom A or classroom B, the expectations and the student outcomes remain constant. But Kathleen can talk about some of the differences and, and the pros and cons and the different models.
Yes, of course, we're continuing to look at all of our models and to make sure that we are creating the best experiences for all children. We've only been in school a few weeks. So I don't want to be reactionary just yet. We're still tweaking our schedules. We're still looking at how we are creating our small groups, how we're creating each opportunity for students. So both, the way we are, I, I don't consider the other classroom a double classroom. That's, this is a different model for us. And we're trying to determine how to how, what it looks like for students and what it looks like for the two teachers that are in that, in that model. So it's not, we're just going to continue to see how it's working for students and, and revise and, and shift as need be.
And then the other question, thank you. The other question that I have is, yeah, and this is based on feedback I've been getting from parents too, is that there seems to be obviously a difference between these younger kids, the K1 versus, you know, my, my daughter can work pretty well on, on her, on her own. She needs minimal help from me to, to do things. But those remote days for those younger kids, I think some parents, especially working parents are really struggling to be able to manage that because those kids need a lot more, you know, parent time and teacher time and those kind of things. So I'm wondering, you know, is there, or has there been discussion about, you know, when we're thinking about either returning back to a more full-term model or prioritizing those young kids in terms of those, that face-to-face experience? Whereas, you know, it'd be great to focus on all kids, but especially those young ones who need a lot more structure and, and contact in their day.
So I'll just, I'll just make some general comments. And I'm sure Clayton and Steve will want to talk about kind of the developmental nature of, of early childhood. But yes, we've reopened and we are talking about what is our, what are our next steps as an organization? And really looking very closely at our early childhood programs, our K1, 2, 3, and elementary, and seeing if we can get more in-person learning time for, for students while maintaining the safety protocols and the mitigation efforts. Mary Ellen Duggan and I have met with our medical advisory team to have these discussions. And as a central office leadership team, we're talking about what is our next step to, you know, accomplish more in-person learning? We, although I think we all can agree that the in-person learning is, if it can be done safely, it is the most effective, especially for our youngest learners at this point in time.
Greg, just from a developmental standpoint, I think the research supports that preschoolers, kindergartners and grade one students, their attention span is limited to the extent that they can focus, you know, shift cognitive energy. I was reading recently that the average adult has a attention span of 12 minutes on any particular topic. So we've exceeded our 12-minute mark on a number of different things. But Would you repeat that, Clayton? I'm sorry. And so, and that's, that's with our kids in person. So, you know, they're fidgeting, the, the goal in, just walk through Finn, you'll see, it is all about the experiential learning, the manipulatives, the learning materials, the experience of learning. And our teachers have not been able to replicate that with any kind of online platform, nor would it be recommended. So we, we're not able to, to really do that. The material that we're sending home is really to reinforce the learning that takes place in school. It is a struggle. It's something that we're continuously looking at and trying to figure out ways that we can help support the learning in a way, as I mentioned before, that isn't so adult dependent, that students are a little bit more autonomous with their learning, to the point where we have learning packets that kids can keep at home and they can use to support the, the guided material that comes home for their remote days. But it, it is an evolution. And as we mentioned from the onset, it's all new, uncharted territory for us. And we're hoping to, to get there. Chan? All set?
Yes, thank you.
Still got your hand up, Katura?
Okay, thank you. So I, I just want to start by, I know we haven't had a meeting since before school started. And I do just want to express my appreciation and how impressed I am at how all of the plans and the, the work and the thought that was put into making all of this operational under incredible circumstances. And with everything being done in an entirely new way than it's ever been done, has really just sort of gone into effect. And, and I, you know, I, I do have a couple of questions and I had a couple of the, you know, the thoughts that have already been addressed, but I don't want those to overshadow the monumental efforts that have been made and what's really happening. And I, you know, I think that the, the commitment and the personal dedication that it takes for our educators to be sort of rethinking everything that they're doing and to actually have come up with some really solid, excellent teaching done in these, in these. Some um really solid, excellent teaching um done in these, in these circumstances. Is is really admirable, and I think that I, you know, I've already seen the sort of the open mind and the progressive mindset. Um in action, I think that, you know, there, I I've been involved, you know, in a couple of suggestions and. It's sort of discussions about things and and I see changes being made on the fly and and improvements, and I um. I think that's just wonderful, and I I expect that that will continue, I mean, obviously, there are some um. Kinks, some some things that will need to be, you know, worked out as we go along, but um. But I can see that that's happening and that there's a lot of thought going into that, and I I do appreciate that, um I'm not gonna reiterate, I. I also heard from the community um a number of the same things that have been raised by the other committee members, so I won't, you know, we don't have to go over those again. I did have a couple of questions about um uh health and wellness. Um and I don't see a place on the agenda that would be a better spot to bring this up, so I I just am wondering if you could. Speak to, I know we've gotten some good information um over email about what are the criteria for moving into remote? You know, we've we sort of saw a little surge in cases in Southborough in the last week or two. Um so that was one thing, if it, if you could just speak to, you know, is there, are there circumstances where we would automatically go? Fully remote, or is it always a discussion? Um I know there's a lot in the news right now about a potential surge happening. And then my second question um is also. About testing and sort of thinking about what our options might be um to move. Into fully in person at some point, and I know that we're, you know, we're not there yet, but I know that you're also keeping your eyes on that and. Um just wondering what the status is of that as far as, you know, what what you've heard and what the prospects might be.
Mary Ellen?
All right, you want me to take this?
Sure.
So we'll start with the metrics, so our metrics for closing, um the update just came from Southborough again. We are again red this week, the update just came out like about seven um from the state, but the numbers are lower, so we're trending. Down, um we had to take all of those numbers um and compare them with the active cases. So I think that there's a lot of data that we could look at, but you need to look at different places, and the Southborough Board of Health has the active case. The actual active cases in town, because um the numbers on the state site showed over fourteen days where the active site. On the Southborough Town site, it shows you how many cases are actually active in the town. What we need, what we've been seeing is a lot of um household cases, so families, so the numbers. We have to take it all in perspective, you know, there could be three or four or even five cases in one household, so um. To decide if we were going to close, if we needed to close, what we would really look for is in-school transmission, and we have had none of that. Um as of yet, as of this time, and hopefully we won't, but those are, those are the things that we'll look at to see if our mitigation strategies are actually. Effective and working at um. Negating the in-school transmission, which is what we want to do, so that's what we're looking at now, and we uh have chosen. The most conservative route when we um for everything we've done so far, and uh right now, it seems to be working. When we have data, we meet with the, we've been meeting with our medical advisory team. Weekly to discuss our plans, our next steps, like what would we need to do to move forward to that hundred percent in person? Which is ultimately our goal is to get everybody back into school, but we have to take into effect all the safety, health and safety. Measures that would go into that, um so we, so metrics for closing, there's no hard and fast numbers, which is. What everybody would like to know, like what are the numbers, what are the numbers, but what we will look for is we will look at all of the data and look for in-school transmission. For testing, screening, testing. Um I just need to put a plug in for our medical advisory team, Doctors Medina, Sierra Nello. Doctors Carrie and Costigan and Emily Amico are Board of Health Nurse because they have been. Had worked tirelessly and continue to work tirelessly for our districts. Um we are looking into testing because really right now, that is what will get us in if we can do. Screening weekly or even more often than that, um and that's actively being sought. After right now, so different venues for that. For our testing of students that are symptomatic, we have standing orders where we can send them. And get the results back in less than forty-eight hours, Dr. Medina has worked on that for us also. And we're working on something for staff to have similar turnaround times. So that will get people back into school sooner, pending their negative tests, if we don't have to wait the five to seven days that some places are. Telling you, but testing has ramped up in the past week or so all around us, so the wait's a little bit longer. Does that answer all your questions, Katura?
Yes, no, that's helpful, um yeah, I I mean, I guess we just don't know yet when, when it may be, yeah.
And I would say, Katura, there's not one, I guess the one, what would move us into from hybrid to remote? Is if there was a similar uh governor's order at the state level. Um that would would be a situation where it would move our entire district into a remote model, um I don't. Um foresee that happening, um and again, it's case by case, looking at in-school transmission, working with the boards of health. And the medical advisory team to make uh safe decisions for our students.
Okay. Um and then I, just a follow-up question, um I know that there have been, you know, a couple of cases that have. I involved um students or staff at some of the schools in in Southborough and um. I'm just wondering if you can comment on how uh how the, I mean, I I it's, everything seems to have been sort of. Handled according to plan and everything sort of went smoothly according to plan, but if you could just comment on. How that all unfolded and if everybody felt like the, you know, sort of the process was was well in place and and everything went well or. What your thoughts are.
I think everything went well, so um the guidelines that we have in place are working. Because we have had no in-school transmission, we're still, I'm waiting on some test results, but. Right now, there has been no in-school transmission, so I, all of our guidelines that we have set forth, um they're all being. Followed and so it really cut down on the number of close contacts because the guidelines were in place.
And I'll just add that, you know, the mitigation uh efforts, you know, the six feet of social distancing. You know, making sure that students have assigned desks um has really helped, um you know, when when required. The contact tracing has been really smooth, um and it also, it's been a very collaborative effort, principals have been outstanding. Um Mary Ellen has been outstanding, and our medical advisory team and the Board of Health has been very supportive, so. All of our protocols and procedures have have worked thus far.
Mary Ellen, if I might, um or through Greg, um. I suspect it must be a little frustrating to realize that. We really aren't in control of a lot of these positive. Tested cases. Because so much of it depends on how responsible families are. Um, you know, with their children. And whatever we can do as far as the practices that 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 uh we implement in the schools. We're still at a little bit of the mercy of how responsible our community is, I don't know. If if uh if if you think there's anything that we can do more uh to communicate this to the community or. It's, it's just the way it is, I guess, um do you have any thoughts there?
I think we have. Sometimes it's beyond our control what happens outside of school.
It is.
Sometimes, you know, like it's beyond the people who get this virus, it's beyond their control because sometimes they don't know either. Or it was because of work or whatever other situation might come about. Um there obviously are things that we can do and continue to do, and that is to maintain the six-foot distance, wear our masks. Avoid, you know, social gatherings of people from outside of our household, we still need to. Try and maintain all of those things to make our risk as low as possible, so at school, we're keeping everybody's li- risk really low. By being the most conservative in all of the choices that we've made and all the guidelines that we follow, so it's just imperative that. On the outside, everybody continues to do what they can to keep their risk low.
Great. I see your hand up, Jen?
I had a couple, a follow-up question actually about the testing, um so a couple of community members have uh mentioned this in various places, but. Is, is there a possibility, so some communities in Massachusetts or districts have um a couple have tried to band together to do like wider. Like more regular testing of all students, and I've heard there's some controversy over that about risk benefit and 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 doing that. Um other communities there, uh I believe on the Cape uh was the one that I'd saw that someone wrote about um. Where they're doing testing and they had parents and the community members raise the money to be able to to pay for that program, have we discussed? Do, is that a possibility for us to do? So that was my first question, and then I just wanted to say something about the community, I mean, yes, we can't control the community. But there have been a lot of cases where um teens or adults actually are using school facilities and courts unmasked. And without social distancing, and I know that's been a concern, I'm not sure how well we can control that either, but um I just wanted to mention that.
So, so I can speak, Mary Ellen, you can add any details, so, so we, as a district, we do believe that. Having screening is an important part of um getting um students back to a hundred percent in-person learning. And we are part of a a larger coalition, thanks to our medical advisory team. Um, you know, I, in the news recently, WBR, there was a news story on Wellesley Public Schools, we're part of that coalition, and we're using some of that work. To think about, um so the plans are underway and we are looking to secure funding um to do some type of screening. And part of that, that work will also be looking at community resources to be able to um implement uh the screening. And obviously, more information will come to the committees in terms of, you know, you know, where do the issues lie in terms of. Moving forward with this type of protocol, why would it be important and really educating the community around how this could help us? Um get students back to learning at a hundred percent uh more quickly.
Thank you.
We have, we do have a conference call tomorrow at seven, seven PM on this topic, so we are, we are definitely moving forward.
That's great to hear, you know, I've heard a lot of community members say, you know, if there was an opportunity for them to contribute or donate to be able to fund something like that, they would be very interested. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Then the, the risk benefit, well, not so much a risk, but the benefit of it, um. Dr. Sierra Nello had some really great charts that showed, you know, like if you tested people once a week or twice a week or, you know, every other week. What the benefit of that would be and how it would benefit the community to do that, so.
All right, um seems like we may be done with the reopening update.
Roger, could I just, Roger, could I just end with a a couple of comments?
Well, could I, could I um? Let let me try to make a comment before you end, and then I'll be done, if that's all right, because you you may, I'm gonna be looking for you to comment on this. Um, this is a, I I'm trying to determine how to make this sound as constructive as I intended. So hopefully it will come out that way, um. You know, as we move through this process, um things are changing all the time. Uh, we determine what what works, sometimes we determine it quickly, we determine what doesn't work, sometimes we determine that quickly. And sometimes it takes a while to to know what works, and this committee. Um I think I can speak for all of committee, we we we'd like to know what we can do to help, I mean, certainly, one of the things. Is about communication. Um but. We meet once a month, and communication from us once a month. Um, a lot of things, you know, is 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 not necessarily timely, I mean, I heard, uh for example. Jess mentioned that she had some information from some parents, but she admitted that was a week old. Um Jen actually commented that um she also had heard some information, but she had more current information and things had been. Things had been um, I won't say fixed, but you know, things have been changed, so. I I I wonder if it's fair for us to um kind of communicate. These things once a month, or, and this is what I wanna be careful about. If there's any benefit to um y- you hearing Greg. Um more real time about the concerns, not with the expectation that there's gonna be a response. Um at all, because I'm, this isn't a question that is intended to lead to more work. But with the expectation that if you're armed with more information about, you know, from a, from a, you know, from another source that can maybe provide you. Some information about what's happening, does that put you in better position? Um, kinda when you're preparing for these meetings, um now, I'll also say. I didn't necessarily hear that any of these things was a surprise. Um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, but I heard that as far as I could tell, most of these items. That that we brought up as a committee. The administration and teachers were aware of, they were working on them, so it was, it was good for us to get some feedback about what was happening. But if if that also is the case, then I'm not sure that kind of providing information more quickly. Does anything but just, you know, provide a greater, you know, you know, or present a greater burden, you know, o- on you during the month, so. Um, I have no problem if the response is, we're fine the way things are going, and to hear things from the committee members at the end of the month. Is fine, but, you know, if uh if there's another answer, I'm sort of delighted to hear that also, so now. That's kind of my last comment, and um whether that's a part of your wrap-up or not, I don't know.
So, so thank you, Roger, I think that. Communication is a continuum from informal to formal, um and I think. We we do hear a lot of anecdotal uh feedback, which is extremely helpful. And we do take that feedback and look for patterns and trends to make decisions around how to move forward. Um, I think also it's important to um be mindful that communication protocols do exist in terms of. If a family is struggling with um that their their child around learning, that they always can reach out to the the child's teacher. Uh the principal, they can always reach out to the central office, we're always willing to listen, so the communication channels are always open, and I would. Encourage families to reach out to teachers and principals and me, because it's very helpful to hear from parents. I think also, I think, you know, just wanna be mindful that we, we are early on in our reopening phase. And we're still implementing, and part of being a dynamic uh organization is being adaptive and flexible. And not rigid in our thinking, we know there are, there are areas that we need to improve, and I think one of the next steps is to provide a more systematic. Um opportunity for the community to provide us feedback around a variety of topics, whether it's the standalone remote. The hybrid remote days, the screen time, um because that's, that's feedback that will help us adjust and improve practice. Um when it's required, and I'll just lastly end um by saying that we are a human resource organization. We are, are about people, whether it's our educators working with our students or families. Um our greatest resource and asset is people, um and we're just very fortunate to have outstanding educators. Who um wanna do the best they can for their students, and I just don't wanna underestimate the tremendous challenge. That everyone has been placed in from our educators who are having to reinvent how they educate in a virtual world. Um to a hybrid model to um educating six. to a hybrid model to educating six feet apart from their students. It's really a different, different experience. They have been tremendous to our students who also are experiencing a different environment and are adapting and to our families who are also experiencing this in a very different way than ever before. And that partnership is even more important. And part of a healthy partnership is communication and feedback. So, so we welcome it. But again, I just want to acknowledge our amazing teachers and the hard work that they're doing.
Roger, can I piggyback on to what you were just saying? Because I, I actually had, I was, had a very similar question because, you know, obviously I got all this feedback because I, I actively reached out to people and said, please give me feedback because I don't have a kid at Finn, at Woodward or at Neary at this point. Like I, everything I'm seeing at Trotter from my kids' experience has been awesome. So I know, you know, my opinion, everything's going great there, but I, I have no idea what's going at the other schools. Unless I act, unless parents come to me practically or I actively look for their feedback. So I had no way of knowing that, you know, what had happened over the past week, because as we all know, people tend to come with complaints and not the compliments. So I didn't know that these changes had been made in the past week. So I don't know if it's, like, I follow all the schools, you know, I check the Facebook pages. Maybe there's a way that the school committee can be kept up to date on the very latest changes. So we know what's going on because we don't necessarily have a kid in all the different schools. And this is just such important stuff that's going on right now. You know, like, as Roger pointed out, like, information gets outdated pretty quickly. So maybe there's a way to keep us posted on these kinds of happenings.
So, so I can also, you know, an idea might be if, you know, if every other week, you know, questions are submitted to, you know, things, topics that you are hearing in the community from your constituents are shared with Roger and then Roger could share them with me. I think that's helpful because that gives us a window. And again, it's another data set for us to, to evaluate what, how we're doing. And potentially if there are changes that need to be made, so that could be a process that's helpful. So again, we do welcome feedback. I know teachers welcome feedback and it's an important part of the process. But a month is a long time, right? So from, from opening to a school committee meeting, four weeks is a long time, especially in a pandemic.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, I mean, I don't know if it's, should the school committee members, if we want to be on like each principal's distribution list, so we get the, you know, the, the highest level updates? Or something, you know, so we know what's happening at the other schools during this kind of crazy time when everything's changing so quickly?
So one of the comments that I had made in, in the middle of my comment, I guess, was I'm very reticent to, to at least agree with something that I think is going to create more work. So I'm not saying this will or won't. But there's, 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 there's a lot of work right now. And you, you know, is, is that, is that just so that, so that we know about it? Or is there something that we are actually, we, we can't really micromanage, you know, this system?
I just want to know what's going on, you know, because I'm, as an elected person to the committee, I want to know how things are, are going at the schools. And because things are going, are changing so quickly, I'm just wondering what the best way to stay updated is. Maybe every school committee member doesn't want to be updated, but I was thinking if I'm on just the reg, you know, the email list that the principal sends out or something, maybe that's a way I can stay better updated without causing any work for anybody.
I, I would like to just echo that too, and at least for me, that I often get a lot of questions about what's happening, you know, have you heard that this is happening at Woodward, for example? No, I, I don't because I'm not on the list, whereas I can answer the questions much easier if they're near questions, for example. So I think from my perspective, that wouldn't necessarily create work for anyone if I could get put on all of those lists so that I know what's happening at each of those schools to best answer the questions. That, that would be helpful for me.
So is the request to actually be copied on principals' communications to the parents? Is that what the request is?
I have a, I have a comment, Roger. Could I just?
Please.
Okay. So I just, I just want to mention that I think that we should be mindful that there is a line between the, sort of the purview of the school committee and operational matters that are really outside of our purview. And, and it's not to say, I'm not saying that information shouldn't be shared and then it's, you know, we shouldn't know certain things, but I'm also, you know, I do think that there are certain areas of operation that are, you know, while and, and I think this can be sort of a fuzzy line sometimes because then if something, you know, like, for example, you know, I think about like the, the bus transportation issue a year ago, right? A little over a year ago. And it's sort of like that came to our attention. It's operational, but it became an issue. And so, you know, we were all informed and involved and all of that. But I think that, you know, even though we're in a pandemic and even though we do have some input and say and oversight over the, you know, general models of education and, and all of that, there's, there's a certain level of detail that ends up being more operational than government oversight. And so I don't know where that line exactly is. I personally don't feel that I need to get the emails from the principals. You know, I mean, I, my kids are into the schools, so I get half of them anyway. But, you know, I don't, I don't feel that I need to get everything from Trotter, for example. I, I, I do see the point that a month between meetings is a little long in these circumstances because honestly, it feels like it was, you know, six months ago that we last had a meeting and we were talking about all these things. So, so I get it. I don't know that we can add another meeting in the meantime, but I, I just wanted to throw that out there that I think that there is a line somewhere and I personally don't feel that I need to get the principal's emails. And I, and I agree with Roger that I, I also wouldn't want to ask for something that's going to create more work.
That's why I asked about the principal's emails because that wouldn't create more work. Like, the things that I'm worrying about are the things that parents are coming to me with. And then I, then I don't know the, I don't know the answers, you know, like, and they are like overall, it's not like, why isn't, you know, this teacher doing this? It's not, you know, little things like that. They're much bigger. Like those questions, I say, you need to go talk to the principal. Like, that's not my purview. But and I do get plenty of those where my answer is, you need to go to the principal, you need to talk to your teacher, then if that doesn't work, you talk to the principal, blah, 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 like chain of command. But you know, like, like I've had so many parents saying to me, why aren't we having both synchronous and asynchronous learning on our at-home days? Like, we were told we were going to. You know, that was a question I got a lot two weeks ago. Like, that's, that's in our purview. You know, that's something that we, we are supposed to, that's what we, you know, we voted for, for that kind of learning. So I'm not, so maybe the principal's emails aren't the way to get that information, but I, it's very hard to feel like I'm doing a good job as a school committee member and and being able to answer the questions of people or, you know, without being informed myself. I feel pretty in the dark in between our meetings.
So just a general comment around adding those school committee members who would like to be on distribution lists, that's fairly easy. I will, there, there are, there are policies around handling complaints and concerns that are school committee policies and it is protocol and a chain. So I would just encourage if people are coming to a, a member with a complaint, you know, again, you, part of the process is have you had a chance to speak with, you know, Dr. Reinhardt or the building principal? If, because honestly, you can't, I don't think school committee, many members can, can possibly answer every question that, that they're, they get. But what they can do is direct people to the right people to get the right answers and get, get the information to the right person. So not necessarily thinking that you're the conduit to answer every question, but helping guide people to the process to answer their questions, you know? That sounds like a central office question. You should really reach out to Greg Martino and talk to him. So that would be one of my recommendations.
I'd like to echo that. I think that and again, there's a, you know, our, our purview isn't operational. And I think the more that we can direct questions to the place that they should be properly answered, I think the more service we'll be doing to the community. It's not necessarily a good idea for us to be jumping in, trying to answer these questions. We want to emphasize and cement the communication relationship between parents and, and encourage that, okay? And where they should be going. So it sounds like that to get a copy of, to be on an, on an email copy list from the principals is doesn't sound like that's a problem. So I guess those committee members that would like to, like to be on those lists, just send me an email, please. And whichever list you want to be on.
Okay. And that's fine. I just want to emphasize that I'm usually when I get these complaints, it's because it's, the chain of command hasn't worked. So you know, they're not getting a satisfactory answer from teachers or, or principals and their point of view, right? So they're like, who do I go to next? Or they haven't heard back in what they think is a timely manner from central office or, you know, whatever. So that's why they're coming to me. So so maybe what I'll do is just, you know, when I keep hearing these things, I'll just keep sending them to you, Roger, but I'm just trying to also be, I'm trying to be helpful to the community while also trying not to overload Roger.
So what is it about this, you know, what you requested? And what we just identified could be done? That's problematic, if, if anything.
You know what? Don't worry about it. It's, it's fine.
No, I mean, you, you, you asked to be on the list, email list, and some people will, some people won't, and that, that sounds great. So is there something else that would be helpful?
I don't know. I'll let you know if I think of something.
Okay.
Can I just, I would like to add that, you know, from, at least I'm just speaking from my perspective too. It's not really about answering the parent complaints because I think we can for, a, a lot of times we know kind of how to direct or redirect folks to those places. But I think you know, being able to see whether like consistencies across schools or just know in general what's going on, I think that makes it easier for me, at least when I come to these meetings to say, well, you know, it sounds like if Woodward's doing this on their remote days and Neary's, I'm throwing out examples, doing this, are we looking at what's working? Is this a development? It allows me to ask those types of questions in an informed way. I, you know, to Katara, to your point, I think absolutely. And I think one of the challenges is that we get contacted all the time by parents who think, oh, well, this person's a friend of mine or I know them, so I want to reach out to them and complain and get it done. And, and they often have very legitimate concerns and they don't understand the process of which, so referring them to the right people is important. And I think that, you know, absolutely being aware of that as, as an issue, I, I agree with that. But for me, you know, that, that information like helps me see consistently looking across the schools to ask broader questions when we come to these meetings as opposed to, well, this happens at Neary and I, I know this, but so that's just my, where I'm coming from.
And I will, I will share that. And I remind, you know, central office leadership team and we remind teachers that we are in a very unique time. And in hindsight, you know, you know, maybe two meetings in the month of September during pandemics is important as we're, as a reopening. So these are all things that I think, I mean, some of them are non-pandemic related, but I think it's also important to know that, you know, we are reflecting on our practice and understand that you also are, as school committee members, as elected officials have been asked to do a tremendous amount in terms of answering questions and fielding concerns and because we're reinventing everything. So we also are mindful of your roles and making sure that you get information so you, you can answer questions and, and be knowledgeable. And I think the suggestion, Jessica's suggestion around being on the distribution list is one easy, it's not a heavy lift for us. And there's tremendous communications that go out from the principals on a weekly basis. So I think it's a good suggestion. It's one that, again, I think will provide you with additional information that could be helpful.
You know, Katara made an interesting comment. He said this, this last month is, seemed like six months. And I, I echo that. But I'm, I'm at least optimistic in believing that as we go forward, each month will seem like it's more and more less than six months, you know, maybe the next month, then we see like three months. And then after that, just because, you know, we're, we're still doing a lot of adjusting and, and finding out what works and what doesn't work. And you know, hopefully that will, that will start to subside somewhat. Anyway, back to you.
So I think that concludes.
Katara, do you still have a hand up or is that just left up?
No, that's, that's all. I'll take it down.
All right.
So I believe that, that is our reopening update. And we do genuinely appreciate the questions and so thank you.
Is it a school bus transportation update now?
Yes. So Katara mentioned a year ago, we were, we had a line at the door talking about transportation. And the challenges that we were facing with transportation, quite frankly, I wish we were back there a year ago talking about transportation, not a pandemic, because we had a lot more control over transportation than we do a pandemic. I will say that, you know, we learned a lot last, over the past two years in transportation. We, at the central office, increased the, the people capacity to be able to do the routing and, and handle the transportation of our students. And also this winter, you know, adding a director of operations has been a very important step into making sure that our bus routes run smoothly. So obviously Keith Lavoy has joined us and Keith Lavoy's work, working with Jean Pinto, the transportation administrator, has been really important in terms of making the getting to school part of the launch of a school year work the way it's supposed to. So Keith will provide a, a brief update.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you for, Katara for bringing it up. And I think Principal Mucci did as well. And I'm kind of glad the other principals did not, which means that transportation was not a focus for the start of their year and they could focus on the other things that are far more important at this stage. But like Greg mentioned, I want to send a huge thank you to Jean Pinto, our, our transportation coordinator for her forward thinking and preparation for this unusual start. Jean and I had been prepping for this for a very long time, but many of the details weren't available to her until August. So what is typically a three to four month process became a three to, three to four week process. And I do want to express that she was working seven days a week around the clock to get this lined up as best as she could. And even since we have started school, she has been incredibly responsive. I think both of us have really tried to be responsive to all the questions, suggestions and requests that have been made of us. They have come from all parts of our community, from parents, students, teachers, administrators, bus drivers and the bus company themselves. So I think one of the key parts of the start was making sure that we were responsive. We weren't leaving that phone call unreturned or that email not responded to. So that was but a goal of Jean and I's from the beginning. We would monitor each other's communication over the course of the last couple of weeks. And at points, there were many, you know, dozens of communications that we had to get back to, but we went through them one by one and made sure that everyone had, had a response. And it's good to have all of this input. I think we've, that's been a, a common thread of what we've discussed during the opening portion of this meeting is that, you know, feedback is critical. And I think that goes for, and will always continue to be a cornerstone of our transportation system. We want to know what works. We want to know what doesn't work. And that's been a key part of our a cornerstone of our transportation system. We want to know what works. We want to know what doesn't work. And that's been a key part of our start. But really what I have found that all the communications that we have received so far have been very fair and reasonable. There haven't been any requests that have been outrageous or anything that's not workable. So we've really tried to make those adjustments to make the experience better for everyone. The next step that Jean and I are focusing on is ridership. Because of the uncertainty over the first couple of weeks of school, we really don't have a true handle on how many students are riding the bus. So it is very tough to say on a daily basis, how many students are using our system. But that is something that we are hopefully going to get some firm data on shortly. I've requested the help of the principals in the schools to help correct, write, collect ridership data over the course of the week of October 26th, and this will include the bus drivers as well. So we will literally take tallies of the students that get off the bus in the mornings and onto the buses in the afternoons, so we can make some informed decisions over what stages are next to make. I will say overall, some anecdotal information I've gotten from a couple of principals is that approximately 50% of the students on any given day of in-person instruction. So let's say today was a Wednesday day of school, was an A day, about 50% of the students in cohort A are taking, are taking the bus. And that's probably anecdotally kind of what we're seeing across the board. The good news is that, you know, during our initial review and as we're tracking this ridership, we are pretty sure that we can meet the capacity requirements set forth by DESI with both of our cohorts A and B as things roll in. So as, as, as more, you know, families become maybe a little more comfortable using the bus, we will be able to handle that load without a problem. Always in connection to that, we've tried hard to have a strong communication base with NRT. Jean is in routine communication with NRT about small and large items. I have a standing meeting with the managers at the, at the bus company to make sure that we're taking care of some higher level issues that have come up from time to time. And that open line of communication has really built some, a good trusting relationship. Jean just recently got a very letter of appreciation from many bus drivers that really thanked her for taking their suggestions into account and making tweaks to the routes that made what they feel is that the life for students much, much better. So Jean's responsiveness, all embedded in the communication has really made a difference. What's on the horizon is actually pretty, pretty exciting. We're hoping that if all goes well over the next couple of weeks, we will be piloting the app, Here Comes the Bus. This is a GPS app that will allow parents to track the bus and its location. Our expectation is that we're going to start that with a few buses in Southborough and a few buses in Northborough, reaching out to those parents and making sure that they have the app on their phone or on their iPad or on their computer so that they can track the bus and get the necessary information. As we're preparing for that, we're making sure that the GPS systems that were recently installed over the summer are working effectively. So that's what's been going on over the first couple of weeks of school. We are making sure that those, that technology is behaving the way that we we'd like. And so far, so good. So we are going to be ready to roll that out shortly. So we're probably going to isolate the communication just to those buses that we'll be piloting. But our hope is that if that goes well, after about a two, two, three week period, we can roll it out to the entire school community by, by December 1st. That, that is our goal as we roll forward. So you know, so far, so good. I think we are off to a good start. The bus company has done a great job responding to the different guidelines that we have from cleaning protocols to capacity management to students wearing masks, to having the windows open. It hasn't been easy, but they have been incredibly responsive. And when they do have questions, they are asking them. And our goal is to get back to them as soon as possible. So that's my report to the committee and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome, Roger.
Greg, legislative update?
So just a quick update. So about a year ago, the governor passed the Student Opportunity Act, which provided $1.2 billion of additional education funding over a four-year period to education. So part of, part of the act was looking at the Chapter 70 funding program. And it requires the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and Department of Labor Services to submit a report, I think, looking at the equity and predictability and accuracy of the method of determining each community's ability to contribute toward education. So currently, Southborough contributes 82.5%, which is the cap under the Chapter 70 funding formula. So it receives 17.5% in state aid. And one of the concerns is that they might change the cap, which would impact the contribution that Southborough pays. So it's something to keep in mind as we move forward. And I would place this as a legislative priority for the committee. The, there is a study survey that is available to committee members. And I will have Cheryl Lapre send out that link tomorrow. The survey is due on Friday. So if any one member can complete that survey, that'd be very helpful in terms of giving feedback to the, the study. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Greg, and I don't know if this is the best place to discuss this. You and I had a brief conversation about the commissioner's position on MCAS. How he was going forward with this in the spring. I think for us, it affects the middle school. I mean, I personally think it's a horrible idea to go forward with MCAS. I think that you know, I think it potentially further, further stratifies community, you know, and its community of learners. And already exists. And I don't know people agree with me, if there's any way to take a position on this. I'm not sure that it I'm not sure what effect it'll have, but I just wanted to at least bring it up because I think it's important.
I could just share a couple of comments. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is moving forward with MCAS assessment for this year as it stands today. In, as part of the MAS C resolutions, it's actually the first resolution. It's MCAS and high stakes testing and having a moratorium on high stakes testing for one year. So that is something that, that is a resolution the committee can weigh in on at the MAS C resolution, joint resolution committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. School improvement plan?
Oh, I, I just, I had a quick question.
I'm sorry, I, I actually, I see both Katara and Jess. Sorry. Go ahead, Katara.
Okay, so, well, I think I saw something today from MAS C that the Governor Baker filed a budget today that does not change the FY 21, Chapter 78 from what was filed in July. Is that? I assume that's good news because it's not lower.
So we, we use FY 20, Chapter 70 funding or state aid funding for our budgets. So that is what the governor's budget that he released today uses. So we were, Becky and her finance team was on target with their, with their projections of what it would be. So that's good news.
Okay.
The bad news is that they are putting a hold on any Student Opportunity Act funding in this upcoming budget. So it's, again, it's, it's a, the Student Opportunity Act adds money, but it looks like it won't impact, have a positive impact on our district this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry, Jess.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with you that I think having MCAS is just a terrible, terrible idea. And I would be behind. You know, if we wanted to put out our own resolution as a school committee saying that we just do not agree with this at all, if other members are in agreement with that, I would be all for that to just show that the Southborough School Committee isn't in favor of having MCAS. If we all agree.
Well, I mean, I certainly, I certainly would support a communication like that. If we again, so I hear two of us agree. How does anyone else feel about it?
I think I would like to, I think I agree, but I think I'd like to hear more about it from the educational perspective, maybe from Greg or somebody who can speak to the pros and cons and I just, I just haven't heard much about it. So, but I, I think I would agree with that.
So, sorry, Greg.
So I would say that it's probably a, an agenda, a topic for an agenda at the next meeting.
Makes sense.
And there are absolutely pros and cons, you know, advantages and disadvantages of moving forward where where I'm pretty firm, which it really doesn't impact the, the pre K through eight Southborough Committee is that I think it's really unfair to have a graduation requirement of our, of our graduating seniors in this current environment. So that's where I think it's important to have a moratorium. So I'd be happy to have a more formal presentation at the next school committee meeting. I don't think it would be too late at that point. Go over the advantages and disadvantages.
Great. Let's, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't think it'll be too late either.
Yep, I'd appreciate that.
Into the improvement plan?
So, so last year, as you know, we reauthorized our strategic plan, Vision 2026. Educate, inspire and challenge. And part of the work around the strategic objectives was making sure that there was alignment with the school improvement plans. So last year, we had a subcommittee of the central office leadership team and principals work on developing a kind of a plan to roll out new school improvement plans. And, you know, Stephanie will present that work and answer any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Greg. I'm going to share my screen. Greg, do you want to, is it okay if I share mine or do you want to share the? So, and this is actually a presentation that you have seen back in the spring. So I'm going to just really briefly recap. And a reminder of the work. And I think we are so deep in the reopening and all of everything we've been talking about tonight, but we do try to take a breath and look forward and keep an eye on all of the strategic planning work that we did last year. And make sure that that still serves as a compass for us of, you know, what's important and what matters. And the school improvement planning process is a part of that. And, you know, a key part of the work we'll be doing this year. So the goals of the committee that worked on, on updating our school improvement planning process were to align strategic planning and school improvement planning, both in terms of the process and the timing and content. To lengthen the duration of the plans so that people could have more time to work on something in their schools, but also allow for agility so that there could be adjustment within a plan to develop a more data-driven process and to create more opportunities for alignment of improvement efforts across the schools. So these are the four primary goals for our work. And much like the strategic planning process, we used the Planning for Success model from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a guiding model and framework. And you'll notice that the elements of the school improvement planning process are very familiar because they're aligned with the strategic planning process. So all of our school improvement plans will now have the district mission, vision and core values, which we have just reauthorized. There will be a theory of action, which is an if then statement of our best thinking about if we do this, then we expect these results. The school improvement plans will include the district strategic objectives. These are the five overarching goals of what we're working on as a district and why we're working on it. And those will be the same objectives that will be found in each school improvement plan. And then each school will have strategic initiatives, which will be specific to the school, although they might be aligned across schools. And those are the projects and programs that that school is undertaking in order to accomplish or support the district in accomplishing the strategic objectives. So those are the how. How are we going to accomplish these objectives? There'll be a section for outcomes. What are the short-term evidence of, of implementation and longer-term outcomes that we're aiming for? And then there will be action plans. What are the specific professional learning plans, budgetary implications, timelines, who's responsible? The nuts and bolts. The process will basically take us through these different components of the plan. So the process will involve the school having the opportunity to revisit the district mission, vision and core values to analyze data, to take stock of where they currently are as a school and use that as a way to set goals, develop a theory of action and the strategic initiatives, those, those, the how that align to the strategic objectives of the district and then create an out, action plan with outcomes and implementation benchmarks. During, so a couple of notes about the process. There will still be annual presentations to school committee. We are working still on what that will look like and what the exact schedule will be. So more information will be coming on that. School site councils will continue to be advisory councils to the principals through this process. And all of these components and processes are aligned to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requirements. Just to compare to what was and what will be with the new process. It used to be that we had staggered two-year cycles. Now everybody will be on a three-year cycle and they will be aligned. So they will be starting and stopping at the same time. It used to be that schools were using varied processes for developing their plans and now we'll have a common set of resources and a common method and be able to support each other as we work through the process. We used to have various templates and ways of communicating the plans, but we have now developed a shared common template that you'll find is aligned to the strategic plan and will be familiar to read because it will be the same sort of setup as the strategic plan. And again, one thing that has stayed the same is that schools will continue to present plans and, and/or updates to the school committee annually. And that schedule, as I said, will, will be coming. Just to show you specifically about the schedule, you can see this is, it's no longer current, but this is what was. There, the cycles that different schools were on, group A, except for, well, that's a Northborough school, except for Proctor. They were all on the same cycle and then group B. And this next chart shows how things are going to work now. So if you just look across the first row of 2020, 2021, you can see that we're in year one of our new strategic plan. What we've done in order to get all of our schools in sync is that the schools that would have been completing their plan are extending it and they will just continue to work on those same goals this year at the same time that they are offering a new plan. And the schools in group B will also be finishing up the plan that they were in while they are reviewing data and authoring a new plan. are reviewing data and authoring a new plan. So essentially, all of our schools will be authoring new plans this year that are aligned to the strategic plan. And then we'll be able to go through the process together, supporting each other, using shared methods and shared resources. The last thing I'll say is just that, that as we went through this process and developed the approach together, there was a lot of excitement and positive energy among the principals about the opportunities that they see in this alignment, both in terms of timing and approach for collaboration across schools and shared strategic initiatives and those sorts of things. And I'm happy to take questions.
Very good. No questions? Thank you very much.
I just, I just have a quick.
I'm missing it again. Sorry, Katura and Kamali.
Um, I don't know who's, Kamali, do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Katura's up first.
Yeah, no, okay. So just, just a quick comment that I think this is a great idea to align them. I think this is going to make it, you know, I, I personally love hearing the school improvement plans. When I first heard the term school improvement plan, you know, a few years ago when I started doing this, I was, I thought, that's a terrible name. Like, these schools are already great. Why do we need to improve them? And yeah, I thought we need a new term of art. But, um, but I, you know, I understand now in context, and I, I think that they're really wonderful presentations about, you know, the overarching goals of the school and, and all these things that, that kind of give us some insight into what's happening. And so I, I think this is, this is going to be great. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I just want to say that, you know, I'm really impressed to see this sort of strategic plan put together just from a business perspective. This is exactly the type of planning that we would do in, in our, in my corporate world. One of the things that I have a question about is how do we mesh this with improvement plans that may come out of a team such as the Coalition for Equity, where we don't have a year or three years to implement or to, to put together improvement plans and then the action plan to actually follow through on them? We're looking for a three-month turnaround and not, you know, one-year turnaround or three. So is there an asterix in here for something like that, where we want to make sure that we still follow the same process and procedure, but are able to, you know, expedite the, you know, how, how we proceed with it?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the guiding principles as we worked on this was that we wanted these to, to be living documents, right? And that, I think I have definitely worked in places where a school improvement plan ends up in a binder on a shelf. And if you sort of walk down the halls and ask people about what, what the school is working on, they couldn't necessarily answer. And it wasn't really a living document. So I think one of our goals was for this to, you know, really be something that could be adapted as we do the work. And so I think that there's that, that is just sort of a, a shared belief that was underpinning the way that we developed the process. So I don't think that will be a problem. And I think with the annual action plans, there's also sort of this constant review process and updating that can happen. So I don't know if that answers the question, but it, it, it doesn't feel like an obstacle to me for that sort of urgency that can come with the work as we, as we live it.
Yeah, no, that, that's fair enough. I am, you said it very nicely, but you know, I understand that essentially, yes, we should still use the same process and procedure, and it's flexible, it's a living document. And so as things need to, as we need to adjust and implement faster or the turnaround needs to look different, we'll do so. So that's.
Yeah, and I think the, the other, the last thing I would say is just that having gone through the process as a school or as a district of creating these sorts of documents, I think gives us the clarity of, of where we're trying to go, to be able to be agile and to make those turns. Because we've gone through the process of getting on the same page about what we're trying to accomplish and where we're heading.
Has this been reviewed with, like, does, does this get reviewed or has it come up already in the weekly teachers' meeting at the high school? The, the reason I ask is I could just imagine that there is a chair of a department or a high school teacher that has been milling around with some thoughts for the last, I don't know, several months that they were home during the quarantine and lockdown. And they had all these, like, oh, this is what we can do to make things better. You know, now that they, we could literally say, well, let's have a discussion about that. And as we have that discussion, here's the model that I want, like, that we're going to frame this in. Has, has that already occurred where it's been discussed with some of these ambitious and, you know, thoughtful educators that already have that?
So the, the actual sort of, the actual new format and that sort of level of detail has not yet been presented and shared with teachers. You know, I think we've, again, been walking this fine line of being very pragmatic and trying to support people in the reopening and all of the sort of day-to-day work that they're facing. And yet us as leaders, keeping an eye on where we're heading. However, I think our principals are constantly engaging, our principals all have this in their minds and are constantly engaging their teachers in these conversations that as we move forward and engage in this process, they'll be in a great position to, you know, harness all that energy and ideas, as you said, and move it right into this process.
Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie.
Katura, your hand is still up?
I'm all set. Sorry, I just put it down.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Stephanie, very much. Are we into the MASC, Mass Joint Conference item?
So like everything else this year, the, the Mass MASC Joint Conference is virtual. And I believe Cheryl sent out an email today. If you're interested in registering for some of the conference conferences and sessions, please reach out to Cheryl. I believe MASC is releasing the brochure tomorrow. So I don't think it actually has been out yet. So be on the lookout for that tomorrow. It's a great conference for those of you who have not had a chance to attend. There's a lot of great workshops. And I think the most exciting part of the conference is really networking with other school committees and hearing ideas and seeing what challenges people are facing and ideas that they have to move the work forward. Also, as part of the conference, there is the, this year, it's the 75th Annual Delegation Assembly, where fellow school committee members come together and have discussions on resolutions. This year, there are 10 resolutions that are being considered. And just a general comment, because it's a resolution does not mean that it's going to immediately come into, to be a bill or become legislation. It's a process. And at the delegation, you really get to hear what other committee members are thinking about particular topics. For example, you know, this evening, we talked about MCAS and high-stakes testing. That is one of the resolutions they'll be discussing. So this evening, if it's the will of the committee to review the, the resolutions and appoint a delegate to attend that meeting, and we also need an alternate in case the delegate is not able to attend.
Well, I think that since the meeting, November 7th, am I correct?
Correct. So the, the meeting is Saturday, November 7th at 1 o'clock. That is the delegation meeting.
And each, each school committee gets one delegate as, you know, to vote, correct?
Correct.
Resolutions, okay. Well, I think we need to review them and then we need to identify delegate and an alternate. So first question is, does anybody like to volunteer to be the delegate? I'm overwhelmed with response.
Look at our calendars. That's all Roger.
Well, if. Are you looking at your calendars?
I could, do we know how long it, it, it goes? It's at 1 o'clock for how long?
Approximately two hours. I, I don't, honestly, from my, from my perspective, the 10 resolutions are, they're not as controversial as resolutions I've seen in the past. So, but again, that's my, that's my perspective.
And, and does the delegate vote representing the will of their respective committee? But, but are we having another meeting before this so that we can all, or are we doing that now?
We, we aren't having a meeting before this, so we need to do it now.
Okay.
So we pick a delegate and an alternate, and then we'll review the resolutions. Do you sound like you're, could be persuaded, Katura? I mean, I, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to be the alternate. If for some reason, any reason you couldn't do it, I'd stand in. So you don't need to have a really good reason.
I, I could do it in my schedule. If somebody else had an interest, I'd be more than happy to let them take it on. So.
Well, I will certainly volunteer to be the alternate unless somebody else has an interest. Okay. Do we need to vote this, Greg, or have we just decided this?
We should vote.
Okay. So let's just do it in one vote. I'll entertain a motion. Let me bring this back up. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Katura as the delegate and myself as the alternate to attend the joint conference on November 7th remotely. Need a motion in a second.
So moved, Jen.
So moved.
I missed it. Yeah, so who, who made, I'm sorry, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did. Jen.
Jen made the motion and it was seconded by Kamali?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Jess?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So be it. It's unanimous. Shall we review the resolutions, Greg?
We could review the resolutions. The other, the other idea would be to create a simple Google form that Cheryl could send out tomorrow, just kind of outlining the 10 resolutions and having kind of a support, not support, and then a comment box. That's one way we could do it, or we could also go through them tonight and talk about each one.
I'm very amenable to what you just suggested, if, if others are also amenable to that.
I think that sounds great, as long as we don't have to vote on this tonight, if it's just a comment.
It's, it's not a vote.
Yeah, okay. So that sounds great to me.
Yeah, you'll, yeah, we'll see from the form, you know, kind of who was supporting the, the resolution, who wasn't. And I think that, you know, it's either going to be, since, since we have an odd number, you know, the committee will either end up supporting or not supporting each resolution. Thank you, Greg. Good idea.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't remember doing this in the past. Is this new for this year, Greg? I don't remember us talking about resolutions for the conference and things like that.
That's a good point, Jessica. I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, this seems new to me. Is this a new thing?
I, I don't think it's new.
Did we just never discuss it?
We have discussed it in the past.
We have discussed it, yeah.
Like 10 resolutions or are there just not that many? I don't remember. I, I guess maybe my memory is just.
It's not always the same number of resolutions, but.
Yeah. But we, okay, I guess my memory is just shot.
Well, what did Clayton say earlier? Our attention span is 12 minutes, so there you go. All right, so.
Jessica, could I, to the chair, if I could just make a comment. So in the years past, I think we've, we've handled it in a variety of different ways. Some years, we've just voted a delegate and let the delegate weigh in without conversation on each of the, the resolutions. However, I think it's important that you, each of you has a chance to kind of show your support or non-support to the resolution. So I think this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, Jessica.
Okay, okay. I, I feel better than.
That makes sense.
So approval of grants and donations, and thank you, Katura.
So at this point, I will turn it over to Principal Hershak to share a grant and a donation.
At the end of the year last year, we had a Trotter family who had been with us for three years approach me and just said, you know, the year is going to be uncertain going forward. They'd like to make a small contribution through their company. In the shade of officers, we're able to donate, you know, $100 to the Trotter Community Gifts Fund. I'm proud to say that we were able to use that money immediately. Teachers, upon their return, really wanted every student in the building to have an individual whiteboard. We've used this in a variety of capacities. We've seen it in our world language classes, but our math teachers are really using these individual whiteboards, not only in the classroom setting, but remotely. It gives students an opportunity to get away from the screens and show their, their, their math thinking and reasoning. And they have, students have the ability to, to show that. So that, that donation and its impact was felt immediately during the start of school. So we can't thank the shade of officers enough.
So I do believe we need a vote to accept this. So I would entertain a motion to accept a $100 donation from Oleg Shadevassers via You Cause, you know, via Your Cause LLC trustee for Autodesk Foundation. This donation is to Trotter Middle School. Looking for a so move in a second.
It's so moved from Kamali.
I'll second it, Jessica.
Okay, then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. I, I mean, I'm fully in favor of this, but we're approving it and it's already been spent?
It's, it's a revolving account. So, so this is, they did never, they never earmarked the money for any particular reason, just for a general account. So we have that community gifts account. But they didn't want to, you know, know, you know, potentially where this could be used in the future. So this is the first purchase we've had for the year from the account itself.
Okay, so like, I mean, obviously, this, this is great and my, my student is benefiting from immensely, so you know, I'm very happy about it. But just like, you know, like, shouldn't we be approving, you know, if this was like, say, a much larger donate? And Gary, this isn't necessary for you, maybe for, right? You know, shouldn't we be approving things before they actually get spent?
Yes, that is, in terms of process, you know, typically, we, you know, this is a grant that we received, funding we received after the last June school committee meeting. But you are right, Jessica, usually it's approved and then we expend the donation. But typically, you are right, Jessica, usually it's approved and then we expend the donation.
An asynchronous process. In other words, we're, we're, we're accepting the donation. And things get spent from the revolving fund all the time, don't they?
They, they do periodically, so, you know, so this donation essentially is, you know, to, to, will continue to go into that revolving of fun.
Right.
Fun, yeah. Because they never earmarked it for anything in, you know, in particular, just for a general donation.
Right, so I think we're, you know, we have an asynchronous process and we also have been able to identify what the donation is, 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 I guess more or less used for, but the, the primary process here is to accept the donation, I think.
So yeah, I think, so just going forward, as community members or corporations want to provide a donation, we can just have a special meeting or an email that says, this has been received. Can you vote, move and make a motion and vote yea or nay? And we don't have to wait and extend a period of time.
Well, I don't think we can do it in email because you'd literally have to have a meeting because this is taking a position. To open meeting laws, so these things have to be done in a meeting.
Okay.
As, as, you know, it's just, that's the process. Any more questions? Ready to vote? Kamali?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Excuse me.
And through the chair?
Yes.
So before we move on to the next agenda item, could I make a recommendation that we allow the principals to go do some lesson planning for tomorrow? And dismiss them from, from the meeting, if, if it would be the will of the committee.
I, I would, I would concur. How do the others feel? This isn't the whole, this is just.
I did, I did have one question, but, and maybe this doesn't require a principal, but when we were getting to enrollments about the loss of a lot of students. But maybe Greg, that's just totally what, something you can talk to.
Yeah, we, I think I could speak to that, Jessica.
Okay.
I think, I, I think that's a great idea. I, this is, I don't know why we haven't done this before. That's, that's a great idea. So fine with me.
If anybody has any questions for the principals now, I'm sure they'd entertain them, otherwise it sounds like a great idea. Okay, sounds like you have agreement Greg.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you very much, principals, and, you know, for all the, for all of the hard work get through this first month. It's, 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 it's pretty incredible, you know, so far, and things will change.
Yeah, I just want to chime in and say that I know that I, I started with, you know, because I'll, I'll, as a school committee member, we, we basically get complaints from parents, but I know that I've seen a lot of stuff, especially as a school committee member, seeing how other school committees are faring right now at this time, and what their principals and leadership are doing, and we are just so fortunate to have you all and your dedication is very appreciated. So thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. Enjoy your, your newfound hour to two hours, or however long.
You're welcome to stay, you don't have, if you don't want to.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And don't worry about our feelings being hurt that you don't want to stay and listen to us go on and on, okay? So really, don't, don't worry about that at all. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. I have a question about the next item, the master plan update and review, and I guess my question is, is to Katura. Is this, can this be postponed? We haven't really, I think, we were going to have a meeting and I think, I don't think we have, so is there anything that's particularly time sensitive about doing this tonight, or could it be moved to the next meeting?
No, in fact, I was going to say, we should strike and review from this, and I'll just give a one-minute update on sort of where this is.
Right.
Okay, which is basically, so I've, I've had the chance now to attend a couple of the master plan committee meetings, and essentially, as you know Roger, but I don't know how, how much the rest of the committee is aware, and the master plan is intended to articulate a vision for the town of the various areas of, of operations and functionality in the town. And in the, in the previous master plan, the schools weren't included for whatever reason, and so now the schools are being included, and what, what we're going to try to do is articulate a vision of this, basically the school strategic goals as it would interact with the community and the town's goals. And initially, my, my sort of, you know, idea, and I, just coming into this, was I'm going to take the strategic plan and come up with, you know, sort of a revised or a new version of the goals. And I don't think that's going to work because the, the strategic plan is mostly curriculum, academic, sort of, it, it doesn't really involve interaction with the community or the broader goals of the town. And so I'm now in a process of getting more information on, you know, how we, the, the master plan should not drive the school, the district's goals, the district's goals should just come through and be incorporated in some way in the master plan. So I'm still working on translating or sort of distilling down what the district's views are, and so I'm in the process of hopefully talking to Greg soon, and we'll see about, I don't know if there's any, you know, anybody else to interview, but I'm going to start there and, and see about coming up with a, with a good school section for the master plan, and then once we have that, then we will review as a committee. So that's, that's the update. There's really nothing to review or do tonight.
I would just like to make a very quick comment. I noticed that Sam Stivers, at least, appears to be in the audience, and I'd just like to give a shout out to Sam. A lot of the work that was actually done on behalf of the schools, the master plan committee, is really due to Sam and thanks to Sam. So we appreciate it.
Yes, and I'll, I'll reiterate that. I had a great conversation with Sam, and he gave me some good background, and so, so I agree. Thank you, Sam.
Katura, thank you. All right, I think that we're, to your report Greg.
Yes, so the first item on the superintendent's report is the enrollment as of October 6th. So we saw a decrease from our projections of 36 students. There was a significant decrease of students enrolled in kindergarten, and a lot of parents made a decision to enroll their students in full-day kindergarten private programs, so that is one reason for, for that shift. We did have a couple of parents decide to keep their children out of kindergarten for the year and will enroll their children next year because the cutoff date for their birthday was so close. And then the other area where we saw a decline in enrollment is in eighth grade, we saw eight students less than we anticipated, and again, you know, we did have some parents choose other programs, private schools, because of the pandemic. Honestly, when we were looking at enrollment, we, I was thinking that there would be a far greater drop-off in our enrollment numbers than we saw. And hoping that, you know, this is just a short-term trend as a result of the pandemic. And would we have any questions?
Yeah, Roger, I raised my hand. You're on mute, Roger.
I do see it, yes.
Okay. So Greg, just for clarification, when I'm looking at this enrollment report, it, it looks like we lost, we lost, so if I'm looking at kindergarten, so we lost eight students in September, so does that mean like, before school even started, they just never started school? Those eight students? Yeah, okay. And then the, in October, we lost three more after school started. Okay, and then same with, so it looks like in eighth grade, we lost seven kids after school started. Is that kind of, was that, you're muted, by the way.
So partly that is because of when we started school on September 22nd. And I think we had, we did have several families who started in the remote program and then made alternative decisions as a result of their students' experience or family choices. And that was during the month of October.
Okay.
We also had, we did also had a few families who moved out of district. So again, people who moved away.
Okay. Do we survey those students or those families, or do we have, is there tracking information or following up with why?
We have not. Jen, typically we do with the transition from eighth grade to the high school, we, we track that information to see where students, what choices families are making and why, so that we have that data. At this point in time, we have not surveyed those particular families, but it would be interested, interesting data to look at to see why.
And the same with, so those kindergarten families, we don't know whether or not they're going to be planning to come back or not afterwards?
Correct, and it is something that we need to look at to see if, you know, if families decided to hold their children out of kindergarten, it can, we could see an increase in the FY22 enrollment in kindergarten, something we need to be mindful of, and getting data from families would be helpful. There are no further questions around enrollments. We are monitoring enrollments very closely, and we're also, you know, I think, looking at our standalone remote program enrollments and, and class sizes, and we are looking to make some adjustments. The next item in your packet is the FY21 monthly general fund expenditure report, and a vote until audited is required, and I'll have, ask Becky to speak to that report.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see in your packet, you do have the monthly general fund report as of September 30th. You can also see that at the end of that month, we had 1.123 million remaining on the bottom line, or 5.29% of the FY21 budget. We are tracking very closely to where we were last year at this time. As of September 30th, 2019, we had 1.25 million, or 5.41 remaining on the bottom line. So we are continuing to watch some of those areas that we've identified in previous school committee meetings. And Greg, do you want to make me the co-host so that I can provide the the financial update?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I'll just, before Becky shares the COVID-19 related unanticipated expenditures, I just want to talk about the financial impact the pandemic has had and reopening. So it's been, obviously, when the budget was approved in the spring, we had not anticipated a lot of these additional expenditures. So this evening, we'll, we'll share an update on where we are in terms of of those expenditures and also some grant opportunities that we have sought out to help mitigate some of the costs. And Becky, do you want to share your screen?
Let's see, I'm, are you still sharing yours?
Hang on.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so just to give you a little bit more information about some of the grant funding, I had presented the three grants that we were eligible to receive, and the good news is, is within the last two weeks, we received word that we were officially approved for the CVRF School Reopening Grant. And that grant is for $275,400. I mentioned before that that grant, as well as the Remote Learning Technologies Essentials Grant, does need to be expended by December 30th of 2020. And the funds that we can utilize that for would be for any type of reopening type of, an expense that is directly related to COVID-19. So we are planning to utilize those funds for some of the expenses that we had previously identified as areas we are watching. You'll also notice on this report, which does list out those expenses that we've revised it a bit. So now we have listed those areas that we're watching. We have also included a column that shows what was budgeted in FY21. And then what our annual projections are for those particular line items, and then the difference between our FY21 budget and what our projections are. Then I've added another column which would show those grant funds that are reflected on the first page of my presentation. And then the difference between both the budget and the grant funds and where we would end up at the end of the year. And then I will continue to track where we have actually spent year-to-date. You can see some of these numbers are small on a year-to-date basis because some of them, we've just started the beginning of the school year. So the teacher substitutes and the additional staff may not have hit our salary line items yet, but I will continue to provide updates on that. We are also working closely with the town of Southborough to cover certain expenses for which we have not allocated these grant funds, and that would be for PPE, and then for certain facility and cleaning supplies, like the electrostatic backpacks that we had purchased, and some of the other cleaning supplies like Lexiglas that have been put up in certain areas of our schools. And so then lastly, I also wanted to provide you with an update on the preschool program and the tuition revolving account. At last month's meeting, we did speak about the new remote learning program, and I think Clayton had mentioned that as well. And this is a program where preschool students, where their families may not want them to physically go into the preschool, but still want them to engage in the learning that is going on. And so we have had 18 families enroll in this program. And so that has certainly helped the bottom line in terms of the tuition numbers for the preschool program. But right now, we're looking at a potential loss of $11,128. Our enrollments are split evenly 50/50 right now between Northborough and Southborough, so we would be looking at a $5,564 deficit. However, as I've mentioned, the preschool revolving account did begin FY21 with a balance of $98,000, so that preschool revolving account will be able to absorb that shortfall of the preschool program. And so if there are any questions about this, I would be happy to entertain those.
And I have one, I'll follow Katura.
Okay. So I'm wondering on the expenses chart, thank you so much for doing this, Becky. This is so helpful to see, to see all of this tracked. So the, the annual projections for the substitutes, teacher substitutes, and also nurse substitute line items, probably those are now projected to go well over budget. I think those numbers, if I'm not mistaken, are the same annual projections that we had on our last couple of presentations in September and maybe even before that. I'm wondering if those are, if we're able to update those at all based on what we now know about staffing? Because I think at the time, there was a, you know, there were a number of things that were being worked through as far as what we were going to have for staff available. So is that, are these still what we're projecting or is there any possibility of that coming down?
That's still a work in process, because our substitutes are paid two weeks behind our other staff, because we have to collect their time sheets. It does take a little bit longer to compile that data. So that's actually some of the work that we're doing right now, is to really look at those, like the day-to-day and the building-based substitutes, to see where we have been in the first few weeks of school. Unfortunately, with, you know, the, the schools starting, like the, in the, the later half of September, we weren't able to really capture that data for this report. But we are looking at that and I'm, I'm hopeful that it's going to go down. And I've been working closely with Heather and also with Mary Ellen to come up with some, some new projections based on their interactions with staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kamali.
Thank you. On that same point, Katura, I'm actually thinking they should just leave that projection in there, probably at least for the first, like, you know, several months. Leave it, leave the projection high until we actually start to gain more data and see where, you know, what's happening with this, the pandemic and how it's affecting the community. So I'm okay with seeing that there. What you did help Becky to explain is kind of the, the lag time and when the, the numbers that may have already happened hit the books or hit this chart. So I at least understand why some of the actual spends, you know, look as low as they do. I have a question about, since the preschool remote learning has a waitlist. Is the waitlist almost like, if it's double in size, is it just like three or four people or is it, it's actually double the amount of what's current, the same amount as who are currently enrolled? Then you could actually, it actually, and, and I don't know if we have to reallocate a teacher or, or what, but you could actually end up null, having a null and void on that loss that's, that's being shown there. If we decide to open that up further and there's space and, I mean, all the other considerations.
Kamali, to your point, Clayton, Jennifer Ostroff, Stephanie, Becky and I met this afternoon to talk about exactly that. You know, what does a waitlist look like? And do we have the existing faculty and staff to be able to open up another section? So the, those are the types of discussions that we're having to close that, that budget shortfall, but also providing students with a great experience.
Right, definitely leading with providing them with the best experience. And then thirdly, are any of the grants received, either the ones that we've now been confirmed for or that are pending, are they, do they get adjusted or impacted based on the volume of students enrolled? So if that, if we change and there's a decline, people pull out of school and whatever, does that now change the, the value from 35K to 30 or 275 to, you know, 250? Is it related to the population count, the student count?
So the, the 275 was related to the population count as of October 1st of 2019. And, but that number is, the amounts that we have been awarded are the amounts that we will receive. The ESSER grant was based off of Title I funding. That was the calculation that they, they used in calculating that lower figure. And then the Remote Learning Technology Grant, Julie Doyle wrote that grant. And that, that is mainly for additional hotspots. And then also potentially for, you know, Chromebooks or iPads. It's a small grant, but that was a competitive grant that we wrote and were awarded.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's very, it's helpful.
Yes.
Jess or yes?
Jess and yes.
You know, not being, so looking at this and seeing, so we're giving out a 145K difference. Like Becky and Greg, what, you know, if we keep trending this way, what, what's our plan basically to cover that?
So we are, so the reason why we're doing our projections now is so that we are looking at our operational budget. Obviously, where the budget was appropriated and we have to live within the means. So we're being, being very fiscally sound and conservative in terms of our expenses at this, this current point in time. We also are working with, again, Mark Purple, the town administrator, to tell the story and also to see if we can access other grant funds, such as the CARES Act at the town level. And again, we're just keeping a watchful eye on, on the budgets, looking for where we can find savings so we can close this budget, budget deficit that we anticipate.
I would also add another positive point too, is that Greg, Keith and I sat down, or I guess zoomed with NRT. And we were also able to renegotiate our transportation contract with them through the end of 2020. So we will see a reduction on those 10 days, the professional development 10 days. It was a 50% reduction in our cost. And then on remote days, it's a 78% reduction. And the reason why we negotiated that through the end of this year is because they also were recipient of CARES Act funding. And so that's when their funding runs out. So really, everyone's kind of waiting on the federal government right now to either extend some of this funding or to come up with a new stimulus plan.
I have a, probably a foolish question. But I'm presuming that the funds provided by the, there's at least one large grant. I'm not sure if there was another one, that are required to be expended by the end of this calendar year, that the allocations are set, so we won't have any problem, I guess, living within that requirement?
Yes, we are actively monitoring this. The majority, like the larger items are those substitute costs for both the nursing and the teacher substitutes. And then also technology. So those areas are the larger ones that we're monitoring. And then we have some smaller ones, some of our professional development committee work that happened to lead up to the, the 10 professional development days. Some of the speakers that presented to our teachers during those 10 days, the Plexiglas. We also have contracted with our facility, our outside facility company to provide an additional eight hours of cleaning each week. So we've really tried to identify areas where we had a need so that we could use these grant funds in the best way possible.
Okay, thank you. Any more on the COVID-related unanticipated expenses? Okay, so what I'd like to do before we move to the capital planning is I think we're, we're done with the budget. So I think we should, I think we should take a vote. And I think what I would like to do is entertain a motion that we approve the Southborough Public School District Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of September 30th, 2020 until audited.
So moved.
Katura moved and?
I second that, Kamali.
Kamali second. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, if not, roll call, vote, Katura?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is unanimous. I think now we're down to capital planning.
In your packet is the capital plan that was developed last year during the budget process, 2021 through 2027. And Cheryl, this afternoon, sent out a email with a, a potential date of having the capital planning subcommittee meet on 10/28 in the evening. So if you could respond to that, that'd be very helpful. And I'll just make a couple of comments. So the first comment is that on the FY22 column of the capital plan, there are a couple of placeholders that we, we added last year and that those are quite large expenses, the roof replacement at Neary School for $1,150,000 and repaving the parking lot and drainage. Typically, we work through the MSBA accelerated repair project and we submit a statement of interest so that we could actually get in the queue of having those projects be considered for MSBA funding. Just a general comment, it's my recommendation that we not submit those statements of interest this year because of the conversations that are taking place with the school research building subcommittee at the town level. And then potentially have some actions for the next year of what direction the school committee should head in terms of those.
The audio cracked a little bit, but you said your recommendation is that we not.
Correct. That is, that is accurate.
Now, I know that the subcommittee and then, you know, also the capital planning committee is, is, is looking for us, for our position on that, whatever position it turns out to be here. Are they looking for anything else from us? Katura's here also.
Well, so we've had, we've had one meeting so far. And we're just beginning the analysis of the sort of, an updated version of the analysis that was done several years ago regarding enrollment in light of the school buildings. So I, I don't think that there's anything else immediately, you know, I mean, that's sort of the first step. We're also coming up with the decision tree and, you know, sort of planning out next steps. My question about this, Greg, is I know that you were, have they come up with the, has MSBI, do, do we have the timeline, the next timeline yet? And, and is there any way we can preserve our, our ability to apply without actually having to, you know, spend money or put a lot of work into it? But just so we're not, you know, we don't miss out if we want to apply?
The, the statement of interest is basically exactly that. It is submitted to the MSBA. And then with the statement of interest, they review all the statements across the Commonwealth that they receive. And then they invite school districts into the, into the accelerated repair project. So it's, it's no commitment to submit a statement of interest. I will share that I did have some conversations with Brian Fantoni at the end of last year around the roof. We did make some, some repairs to the Neary roof to get a few more years out of the lifecycle of the roof. So that gave me some comfort to know that, again, it's not an imminent, immediate concern. It's something that we need to address in the next two to three to five years.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to go back to, I, I, I think I see Jason's in the, in the attendee list. The expectation is that we, is that we take a position. Is it something we need to formally vote or do we just, do we agree that we're not going to move those forward?
My, my recommendation is that the capital planning subcommittee meet on the 28th and have a, a conversation around the project or the capital plan in its entirety and specifically around FY22 and what we need to do. If it's the will of the subcommittee to submit a statement of interest, that does not commit the committee to do anything. It just, it just gets us into the queue with MSBA. So, so I think a deeper conversation around, around this work at our next capital subcommittee meeting would be my recommendation.
I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me. But I don't think that's anything that, that we need to vote, right? We just need to make sure that we're, you know, we've heard this. Does anyone object to this is the next step in the plan?
No, I don't object. I, I wouldn't want to make any moves right now.
Okay. Fair enough. So that sounds like, that sounds like the, the proper next step that, that this committee would concur with. I guess we're on to budget priorities.
So these are the FY22 school committee budget priorities that were drafted approximately a week ago for continued conversation. And if it's will of the committee, if there are no significant changes or no significant conversations or discussions, it's a will of the committee to, to vote these this evening.
Can I just say that just like a month ago feels like six months ago? I, I could have sworn we did this like a month ago. I believe that was last week.
How is this last?
Okay.
So true. So, does anyone have any issues with these or are we ready to vote? Okay, so. I don't see your hands up. So I guess the vote would be that that we would, I guess I'll entertain a motion that we would adopt, that the Southborough School Committee would adopt for, for FY22, the list of budget priorities that's been presented in the draft in the packet. So I guess I'd look for a, tonight's packet, look for a, a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion. So moved. Want me to say the whole thing or?
I don't think you have to, unless you, unless you correct, i- if you'd like to correct what I said, which I have no objection to.
I think you were accurate. So moved. Sounds great.
Sounds like, and Jen?
Yeah.
Jen seconded. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none. Roll call, vote, Jess?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is passes unanimously. Budget calendar.
So in your packet, hang on, I'll try not to make anyone nauseous. Hang on. nauseous. Hang on. Sorry, just give me one second. So in your packet is the FY, uh, 22 budget calendar and, um, I believe Cheryl added the, um, operational budget subcommittee meeting that we, we did have. And, um, this is a dynamic document that will be adding dates as new meetings and new events, uh, take place. Um, and I would share that there's probably some level of uncertainty to the budget calendar as the, um, state does not have an FY21 budget. Um, and I can imagine that FY22 projections will come out anytime soon. So, um, Becky and I are meeting with Mark Purple tomorrow to talk about the budget process and we'll provide an update to the committee after that meeting.
Okay, any comments?
No, that's fine. I think I would like to see that update.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, no educational policy at this time. Um, we've got some distribution of some policies. I'm trying to make sure I can read this correctly. So we've got the face covering policy. A170. I'm trying to get down to the packet to see where, where we are on that. Are we really just distributing that tonight?
Yeah, I think those, we voted those and.
We voted those.
Tonight.
And we've got the general, um, interim policy on COVID related issues, interim 001. Okay. All right. Um, personnel report, personnel items?
So in your packet is the, um, personnel report as of October 14th, um, 2020. And I'll just share that, um, it has been like hiring season like no other. Um, it's been very challenging. Just want to, um, thank Heather Richards and her team for the work that they're doing. And I'm not sure, Heather, I'm not sure if you want to make any comments on, uh, the personnel report.
Um, I, I think that you'll see there have been a lot of transitions. Um, some of the resignations happened earlier in the year. So, um, I think the, you'll see some transitions, especially within the technology department. Um, and that's just people moving within districts. But I don't think there's anything that's really notable, um, as, as, um, really different in this personnel report.
I'd just like to say that, um, I'm sure this goes under the radar a bit, but, uh, managing personnel in this environment, um, is, is, uh, got to be a very difficult task. And, uh, um, thanks Heather for, uh, for all you do in this area. I, I just, I don't think it gets, uh, you know, I don't think it rises up to, um, to the top of the observation level much, but, um, it's, it's gotta be challenging.
Thank you, Roger.
Yep.
So Roger, if I may, I just will comment that this is one of the, the real areas of challenges that we're facing in terms of finding substitutes, long-term subs, that the typical, um, application pool that we'd receive, we'd receive 125 to 150 applications were, um, in single digits and in, um, it's been extremely challenging, um, and of concern to us at Central Office.
Do you think that that's something that will change as people maybe get less anxious or I'm not sure, or there's more availability of staff?
I would, I would say that this is not unique to our district. Um, this is something that other districts are finding as well. Um, and there are just not a lot of applicants for substitutes and we have really tried very unique methods of recruiting for substitutes. Um, and, um, we're just actively interviewing candidates as they apply.
Ross. I'm sorry.
Um, I was just going to share that I've also heard the same feedback, um, out of state, um, for, um, schools that I'm affiliated with in New York that they just cannot find a pool of teachers, uh, as needed and, um, substitutes as needed.
And I think one of the, the, you know, recruiting strategies that we're looking at is that there are a lot of um, students who didn't return to college for whatever reason and were, you know, rethinking about how we market and how we advertise and really trying to utilize the networking that exists in our communities with, you know, whether it's the professionals that live and work in our communities or parents who know someone who's looking for work. So anything, one way the school committee can help is get the word out. If you know someone who's looking for, um, a position or, um, substituting, please have the person contact Heather. That'd be very helpful.
Okay then. Um, before we, well, I guess, I guess we'll go to the next item. Um, well, be, before we leave this, uh, one of the things, um, that was mentioned is we've had some movement um, in the IT area. Um, Greg, you and I had a brief conversation. Um, there's a request out from Matt Probst who, uh, uh, the chairs of the, he's the chair of the technology committee and um, we've, we've had an kind of an ad hoc representative on that committee. It's, it's not the one that, um, that we, a committee member that, or the school committee members that were put forth on that committee, but, and I imagine that we are 150% utilized with the, with the person power that we have in IT right now. Um, the request was that we identify someone to fill that empty spot of the ad hoc representative. Um, I don't know if, well, first of all, do we really have anyone at the moment that could do that? I guess that's my first question. Um, so.
I, I would echo those comments, Roger, around the amount of work um, and in the volume of work our IT team is doing currently. Um, and I think although the ad hoc committee, ad hoc membership is important, I think if we can revisit this in the spring, um, I think that, um, would make sense in terms of just the volume and capacity and the people power that we have at Central Office doing the technology work in our district.
Well, what I would, what I kind of recommend that I do then, and, and, uh, if, if you and the committee members agree, this isn't really a voting topic at, at this point. I, I'll, I'll communicate that to Matt. I don't see him, uh, tonight in, as an attendee. I, I think I could potentially offer, um, but not, not if you disagree with this, that if he had a very specific need for, uh, someone to, uh, sit in on a topic on a specific meeting, um, that he should at least potentially feel free to reach out at this point in time or, or would that be, is, is even that inappropriate based on the, uh, resources that we don't have right now?
I would ask Julie to, to weigh in. Julie, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, sure, Roger. I don't see any problem with that at all. If there was a specific topic that you, that they needed, um, some input on from the, you know, schools' technology department, that, that shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem.
Fair enough. And I think Matt would understand, uh, if we couldn't accommodate, you know, but at least, uh, at least if we, if, if we'd allow him to feel comfortable making the request, um, as a sort of, if, if we have someone available at the time. And I think that, uh, I think that'd be a great way to move, to, to kind of move forward on this issue. All right. Um, anybody on the committee have a, a comment on this? Okay, seeing no hands. I guess we're on to the subcommittee and liaison assignments. I know that that's currently in the packet. Um, I started to do a little work on this, um, which was kind of extend this, this, um, th- this is where, this is where we left, um, the last time we discussed this, uh, where we had, I guess, the required, um, liaisons. Um, I did a little work on this, but I haven't sent it out yet. Um, so I don't know, so, so I don't really have anything to add tonight. More to come. Um, Greg, are you aware of any other necessary um, appointments or liaisons at this point, other than what's already on this list?
I think that, um, no, I, I do not, Roger.
Okay. Certainly if anybody, uh, wants to be added to any of these things, uh, please let me know. But I will get out a kind of a, I guess, an updated draft of this, um, really just as a draft so that can, so, so people can take a second look.
Can I ask a quick?
Jess? I'm sorry, who, who said that?
I, I, I started talking, but I think Jen did too. So go ahead, Jen.
Jess has got her hand up.
Oh, well, she's doing it the right way.
Um, my question is just Greg, and I, I was waiting, I was trying to find a time in the meeting to ask this, but maybe this is a good time. Um, Coalition for Equity, what's going on with that? That, are we meeting at some point?
Yes. So Rhoda, do you want to provide a quick update?
Um, so yes, thank you for asking. So we had our first meeting, uh, on Thursday, October 8th, um, in which we, you know, spent time getting to know each other. We had over 79 statements of interest that were submitted. Um, so it's an indication of a very high level of interest in the work in our communities. Um, and so there are 29 members on the, on the, uh, coalition. Um, so we do have a schedule of meetings once a month throughout, uh, this school year.
Okay. So I think I was supposed to be involved with that. That meeting that happened.
Jessica, we'll make sure you get that information and, um, meeting materials and the next meeting date.
Okay. Is there anything that, cause, um, some people have been asking me about it. So, um, is there anything from that first meeting that you could forward to me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we also will be sending out a communication to the community, just giving an update on, I mean, that the charge of the coalition, that it's, uh, who the membership is and, um, the work that it's undertaking.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Um, I attended that first meeting. So if you, um, if there are open questions, you could also, or them to me and I'll see if I could, um, answer.
I just wanted to know what's going on. I don't have any specific questions yet. I just, um,
Okay, I'll set up some time and talk to you about it then.
Hands still up?
No, I just, uh, no.
Jen?
Um, I had a quick question. So for some of these optional appointments, uh, should we, is this probably related to somewhat to Jessica's question? Do we wait for, are we supposed to reach out to folks on that committee or they reach out to us? How does that happen?
Well, this is, this is published. Um, I'm presuming it's published to the committees, Greg? So that they have the South Grove Committee member as their liaison?
So I think what might be helpful is if we go through these optional appointments and I just do a quick summary. Um, and this can be in an email of, of, is the committee active? Is, is it, um, how often does it meet and when? So you just have knowledge that you're not missing meetings or you know that that's not really an active committee this, this year. For example, the liaison to the start time working group is a good example where we will be meeting probably once this year, but the bulk of the work has been done, um, last year and in the years past. So I can get that out, um, the next few days.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I've been the liaison to the senior citizens and that hasn't involved, like, I don't even know what that means, to be completely honest. Um, so some of these, I'm wondering, do we need to talk about what they actually, I mean, I guess Greg, that's what you said, but is that an optional committee? Like, I'm not even sure what all these committees are.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, that, that's some of the cleanup work you've, you are working on too is, you know, I think this has been a kind of a running list of, um, appointments and committees that have taken place over the years. Um, and some might need to be reactivated and, and recharged and others might just need to be removed altogether.
It is, um, it, it is part of the cleanup. What, what maybe I could do Greg is I could send you, um, at least the, the redraft of this draft that I had done. Um, and then if, if you come back with, you know, um, information about, you know, are these still active, et cetera. Now, I don't want however to, um, have folks think that, that, I mean, for example, um, Jen, um, you're on the NS PAC committee. So is that?
I'm actually, um.
I'm sorry, Jess. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought Jess and I said Jen, my fault. Um, are you, I know you're on the email list. Um, that's a pretty active committee.
Yeah.
I subbed in for the last one, um, and the one before. But that is a pretty active committee, uh, and probably taking on even maybe more, um, more activity nowadays than than it has. But some of these, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll clean the list up and we'll get something out in the next week. Okay?
Sounds good.
Um, action on the minutes. Um, we've got three dates. We've got the special open meeting minutes of June 18th, open meeting minutes of September 9th and the special open meeting minutes of September 29th. Does anyone have a reason? Well, first of all, does anyone have any, uh, reason that we shouldn't do these in one vote? And does anyone have any comments on any of the minutes in the packet? All right. Well, I'll take a crack. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the special open meeting minutes of June 18th, 2020. The, um, now let me ask, okay, the, also the open meeting minutes of September 9th, 2020 and the special open meeting minutes of September 29th, 2020. Entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Katara moved?
I'll second.
And Jess seconded. Any discussion? Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Jess?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes unanimously. Um, bills and payrolls. Um, agenda items for next month.
We had, we talked about one, right? And I'm blanking on what it was.
Master Plan.
Master Plan. Uh, could we get an update on that, um, Equity Coalition? Next month? What they're working on, what they're talking about, that kind of thing? I mean, I guess I'll be on it and it looks like Kamali's on it. So.
I think we should, my, my recommendation to the committee is just have that as a running, um, agenda item each month for an. For an update.
Okay, great.
Greg, there was an item earlier in the agenda, which I think is really the one that I think Jess was talking about, but I can't remember it either, which, oh, I know what it was. It was AMCAST. You know, we were going to talk about AMCAST as an agenda.
It was AMCAST, yes.
Okay. And if anyone has any thoughts, you know, over the next couple of weeks, and we'll see if we can get that onto an agenda.
I think just a couple of recommendations and update on the hybrid and standalone and remote program, an update on that and how it's going. And obviously, we might have additional feedback at that point, more formal feedback from a survey perspective.
Maybe we can have a transportation update as well. I think maybe between now and a month from now, I think Keith mentioned they're going to be unveiling the GPS app.
We didn't get a report from Student Support Services tonight, did we? No.
We should probably put that on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, could, could that be like a every month item too? I thought it was.
I think, I believe when we did our COVID-19 updates, we had each of the directors report out, and Student Support Services was part of that. I'm sure Marie would be pleased to share an update and a report the next meeting.
Also, since we're talking about upcoming agendas, I just noticed at the bottom of this agenda, it says next scheduled combined school committee meeting date. I think that's our regular meeting, is Monday, November 9th. And then the combined meeting.
It certainly should have. Is that our next, the 9th?
Because of the Veterans Day on the 11th.
Might be right.
I think that's our regular Southborough meeting. And then the combined meeting is on Wednesday, December 16th.
That's correct. I'm looking at the hard copy printout, and that's correct. Katara stated.
So this, this looks like it's reversed. It looks like the combined meeting's on the 9th, and the Southborough meeting's on the, no, no, I'm sorry.
Right, so just switch them. Yeah. Just, just so everybody's, you know.
I'm looking at a different month. Okay. Any more agenda items, or should we go to audience sharing? All right. Audience sharing. Do we have anyone that would like to share? I don't see anyone's hands up. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Moved by Katara, seconded by Jess. Roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And it is 10:07, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.